It's hard.
To make noise?
Yeah.
Sounds like a chalkboard.
Huh?
Doesn't really.
Yes.
I do it all the time.
And wad and up papers?
When I want to say something, so.
He said it sounds like a chalkboard.
Okay, we're going to reconvene this March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Montague County Board of Education. And we're going to start with a public hearing for the proposed twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four levy rates. Superintendent?
Is there anybody here to address the board related to the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four levy rates?
Okay. That'll include that hearing. So, moving on, superintendent.
Right, item B is the adoption of the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four levy rates. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the levy rates as presented in your executive content, which you did receive the notice of approval of the levy rates, as well as the levy order and rate sheet.
I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments from the board members?
Okay, all in favor of the adoption of the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four levy rates as presented, signified by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same? And that puts our next board meeting is next week, right?
Uh, no, it's starting here in a minute.
Adjourn us, you have to adjourn us.
You're going to adjourn us and then gavel us back in.
Okay, well.
Adjourn the other one.
Give me a second.
It's on there somewhere.
I got him. Okay, that meeting is adjourned. It just says next board meeting on here, and that's one of them. Kind of weird, but. Okay. I'm going to call this meeting of the Montague County Board of Education to order, all rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Superintendent, I'd like to actually see how close Madam Haggard is from right now to. So she can hear the entirety of the hearings, if possible, let me see how close she is. Okay, the way we're going to do this tonight, we're going to give, uh, the superintendent's going to give us a little bit of background on the transfer that they are requesting. Uh, our staff will make a presentation of the case and then the, uh, the employee that is here for the hearing and their counsel, if, if available, will, uh, have a chance to make their case. And during those, uh, the presentation of the, of the administrative, the administration's case, will also give opposing the opportunity to, to ask questions of anyone that's, that's brought forward. And then also the opposite when the, uh, here, when the employee is putting on their case. So, um, superintendent, uh, let's go with A.
Okay, board members, just as a, an overview, quick overview here. We do, we only have three this evening. Uh, we did have one of the four withdrew their request for, for the hearing. And again, these are, these are personnel recommendations that, that, that I will be making related to the transfer of employees. And of course, by statute, they have the, the right to request the board, uh, a, a hearing before the board votes on those recommendations. I will turn things over to our in-house legal counsel, Jennifer Karadine. Jennifer will guide us through the process this evening, as well as represent the superintendent and the administration, um, in the, in the hearings. So, Jennifer, I'll turn things over to you now and we'll move on to our first hearing with employee A.
Okay, so our first hearing this evening will be with Danielle Ditman. And if we could have maybe Mr. DeSantis, you can either come over here or sit in any of the blue chairs. Ms. Ditman's going to sit over there.
I don't think it's okay.
I saw a very close.
What, what part is not okay?
That our representative's also, uh, running the hearing, it shouldn't be that way.
I'm not running it.
She's not running the hearing, you are.
Okay, I was just making sure it's very clear that I'm in charge of the hearing here.
Yeah.
So that's, that's, that's a clear.
She's just represents the administration.
Go ahead, Ms. Ditman, you can have a seat.
My name is, um, my name is Danielle.
Uh, just a minute, we're, we're going to go through the, the process of how the hearing runs. So, Ms. Ditman, I will, I'll make a statement because the board, uh, the administration here tonight has the burden of proof. So, um, we will make our statement first and then you will make an opening statement. And then we're allowed to call a witness and then you can call any witnesses you have or you can present your own testimony. Through that, at, once we're finished with the questions, you're allowed to ask our witness questions and then the board's allowed to ask questions, okay? So I just want to say that. So when, um, the president's ready, we'll go ahead and start with, I'll give our opening statement and you can give yours.
Okay, first, do they want an open or closed hearing?
She, oh, I, I spoke with Ms. Ditman outside, do you want open or closed?
Um, open is fine.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
You ready?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, uh, as Dr. Campbell said, I'm here tonight representing the administration, requesting that the board approve Ms. Ditman's transfer and subsequent reassignment for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. As always is the case, and as the board knows, a transfer is no reflection whatsoever on an employee's performance or their worth to the education system. Um, we're not making any statement with regard to this transfer with respect to Ms. Ditman's, um, performance in her job here. Um, this decision is, Ms. Ditman is an autism mentor currently at Mason Dixon Elementary School. She's been an autism mentor for many years in Montague County schools. Currently, Mason Dixon has two autism mentors in their school. And looking at the needs countywide in all other schools with students with autism and autism mentors, it was determined that Mason Dixon did have the ability to afford one autism mentor out as assistants in other schools. In this scenario, we did have to look to seniority. Typically, transfers are looked at on the basis of the position, not seniority. But in this instance, we had two employees that have the same position. There are two autism mentors at Mason Dixon Elementary School. Ms. Ditman was the least senior of those two. So that's why this recommendation comes before you tonight and the administration would ask that you uphold this recommendation.
Thank you.
My name is Danielle Ditman, um, and like they said, I'm from, um, Mason Dixon Elementary. And, um, I know, like, this has nothing to do with, like, my job qualities or anything like that, but it is, it is a concern for our school. We are on the, we are on the, um, western end of the county. We do have way fewer employees, staff-wise and stuff, than what we, Morgantown schools and everything do for the majority, the majority of it. And, uh, um, safety is a big concern for us. We do have, like, I'm an autism mentor at Mason Dixon Elementary, along with, there is another one as well. When I was hired at Mason Dixon, I was one of the first autism mentors because Mason Dixon really has never had a, a, a large autism program or anything like that. But since I was hired, we have had several, um, kids come in with autism and, um, special needs and, um, there's just, there's a wide variety of it. So, um, there was only one child at the time with autism. We then, um, took on another child with autism that was in the same grade as the one that I am, I was with. So there was another autism mentor at that time hired for, for this other one. Since then, um, that child has, has left, went to another county. But since we, we do have another child with autism as well that the other autism mentor is with. So, and they're in separate grades. So it kind of makes it extremely impossible for, um, one autism mentor to assist the needs and, and do the things that we have to do with these children as far as, like, bathroom breaks and, and lunches and recesses to make sure that they're safe and stuff. My biggest priority, or my biggest thing with this is, is the safety of the kids. If, if, if we're eliminating, um, like, the jobs and stuff at our school, then, um, who's going to be there for these kids? I mean, they're going to have to learn, like, a whole new routine, um, and, and, and everything. Because the child that I'm with and the, the child that the other one is with, she, we've been with them since they were in kindergarten. So now they're in the third and second grade, moving up to fourth and, and third grade. So it makes it almost impossible for one, um, one aide to be with these kids, not to mention all the other ones that we assist with as well. I have, I have two that's with me pretty much all day long that I take care of from the time I get there in the morning until the evening, not to mention all the other kids that we have coming in and out of our classroom because I'm in a special ed classroom as far, as long, as well as being into, in a, um, in a cla, in the general ed classrooms. So what we do as well, we help out all of them, not just like one certain kid, but we have, we have several kids that we help out and we take care of, um, throughout the day and, and assist in their needs and stuff. I do have, um, some letters, um, from some of my staff members, um, stating the, um, the reasoning that Mason Dixon, you know, that's the wrong one, does need, um, to keep more staff on hand as, as much as possible. Because it is like a huge safety concern.
Thank you.
If we have, if we don't have the staff to help, um, take care of all of the, all of the kids and everything we have in, in our, in our school.
I don't have any other, anything else to say, I mean, if you have any questions or.
So the administration calls Donna Talarico as the first witness. Ms. Talarico, um, when you're making, and when everyone collectively is making staffing decisions, what are the factors that are examined at the schools?
Well, we look at a comprehensive overall view of all the schools in Montague County and our commitment has always been to provide equity of services to all of our schools. And as we know, um, special needs is a needed area and the services have to be in every school. And that's just how, um, our students remain in certain boundary areas. So we try to keep all students in their home school whenever possible. So the, the decision is made based on the numbers and the equity within the school and on the needs that are stated in the IP's of the students that are at those schools.
So with regard to Mason Dixon specifically, Ms. Ditman said that Mason Dixon is a small school and it has fewer employees. Would you say that that's an accurate statement?
I would not agree with that. Mason Dixon absolutely has comparable staffing, uh, to all of the other schools. In fact, because it is identified as a, as a title school, it also receives supplemental support, uh, through Title I. But within the special education number of services, it is absolutely receiving the same services based on the needs of the students with the IP's.
Did you look at the ratios among the schools with regard to, specifically with regard to autism mentors and students with autism? Excuse me?
Yes, again, that is a number that we do look at and we look to see if there's comparability. And that is how many, based on the needs of the students at each school, of the autism mentors that we serve.
And with regard to Mason Dixon, how many students currently are in the school with autism?
Mason Dixon has a total of three autism students and two support autism mentors.
So when you look at that ratio, what number do you get when you look at the number of students to the number of autism mentors?
The ratio is one to five, one point, uh, five, uh, so one and a half for every student.
So, um, and I think we might have said that backwards, so it's one and a half students to every staff member, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so what, um, what ratio is actually the highest in the county right now?
Right now, Skyview, uh, has the highest number of students per staff member and they have five. And then, uh, at this point, Mason Dixon clearly was, uh, the, the number of students that was most out of kilter. But we don't even look just at those numbers, we look at the needs of the IP's and then how much staff we have on hand and how they can serve the students that are identified.
And you said that there were some supplemental services with Mason Dixon being a Title I school. Are you confident that with this staffing change, the students' needs would? Are you confident that with this staffing change, the students' needs would continue to be served at Mason Dixon?
I absolutely am confident that the needs can be met. We do this throughout the county. We do this yearly, and we, what, above all else, what we look to do is make sure services are equitable throughout the system and that every student has the same set of supports that they need.
Is there any other information that you heard Ms. Ditman share that you feel should be addressed at this?
I don't think so.
Okay. If Ms. Ditman has any questions, you can ask Mrs. Talarico any questions you might have.
The only question, the only thing I have is, like, I understand that we do have staff. And we also have an LPN aide that is at Mason Dixon, and I feel that, I mean, the only way that they're going to be able to make this, this work with our students, the way that they're separated, the way that, that things, that things work through our school is to have an LPN aide take, take over like the autism students. And like, the only thing I don't understand is how can you have an LPN aide work with autism students whenever that's not even part of their, like, their job classifications? That it would be like me doing and taking over LPN things that, you know, that I'm not trained in to do or that I don't have like license or certifications to do. And that's the only thing that I feel that with me up for transfer that that's, they're, they're going to have to take that LPN and place her with, with autism students because it's the only way that they're going to be able to make things work.
That is not our intent, to use the aide LPN in that way. The, the two autism students that will be remaining will be served by an autism mentor.
There's no way for that to happen, though. It's impossible.
I believe that administratively, we can make that happen. It, it's very much based on the administrative schedule that needs to be in place, which would be your principal and your sister principal working with our director of special education, just like we have five students served at Skyview, but we don't have one person per student.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. If the board has any questions?
Go ahead.
So to be clear, if more autism students were identified or going to be going to Mason Dixon that required one-to-one aide or had different IEPs that required more services, then a position or another solution would be put into place? Yes or no?
Yes. This board is charged with meeting timelines for transfers, and at this time, that's what we have to look at. When things change and new students come or leave, we absolutely address those. But in this case, in order for us to meet the timeline for all transfers, this is what we have to recommend.
Are there more autism students coming up the ranks?
Yes. And I, I wish I had that answer. Right now, we don't. I've even consulted with our director of preschool. You know, we can perhaps look to the future, but we don't have any numbers. So prior to this, so if I could have numbers, solid numbers, I would have brought those in so I could share those with you. But unfortunately, for this particular date and time, I cannot firm up any final kindergarten or preschool numbers.
And just to clarify, it's all about the timeline that the state lays down as far as when these things have to happen. Because I was sitting here thinking way back with the strings situation, but we really don't know until you start getting registration beginning next year. So let's say, pull it out of the air, if four more showed up out there, can, how difficult is it to say, okay, we're going to leave her there? Is that a quick decision? Does it have a whole bunch more layers to it?
No.
I'm not saying that would happen, but I'm saying just, because that's months away yet. Like you said, you don't know what that number is.
And yes, we do that all throughout the summer, and there are cases when people are able to get the same job back that they had if the numbers do increase. And certainly, any other opportunities that might come available in that school would be available as well. So it's just, as you said, the timeline keeps us very prescriptive.
Yep. I mean, we understand why it's that, because if it was a termination, we'd give them time to find other work and so forth. So one hand, it's a good idea that the state has, and the other hand, it kind of jumbles things up. I do have a question about something that she had mentioned about two different age, or two different grade levels of the autism students. How does one individual handle that part of it?
Again, based on the IEP for every student, it, we look at the needs for the supports within that room. A full-time autism mentor is not necessarily needed for every student full-time throughout the day. They need additional supports, and again, this is an administrative scheduling issue that we will continue to work on to make effective, and we do this in every school.
That's all I have.
The one question I have, and it's just for clarification, if, if more students show up at Mason Dixon Elementary that are, have IEPs that are specifically to the needs of Ms. Ditman, is she the first one back in that school? She does not leave that school?
That is correct.
And this is one of those times of the year, and it's just, just because we have so many, if there's zero, if, if them two kids move that are there, then we have somebody in place that doesn't need to be there. So we, I mean, we make, this is such, with 12,000 kids, it's such a moving thing.
It is. It really, really is. It just comes down to the safety of the kids because we have so many kids that are, that are flight risks. I mean, I, I have ran down the driveway of Mason Dixon Elementary. I don't know if you've been out there or not, but that is a heck of a driveway. I have ran out of the school building with no walkie, no nothing, just hoping that somebody would see me to be able to, like, come assist me with that. So when you're in a situation like that, it's scary, and I've dealt with this with students daily, so it's stressful. But what it all comes down to is the safety of the kids. And I fear that if we don't have the help that these kids need, I mean, a lot of these kids are coming from, they were pulled out of school in kindergarten. So it makes it really tough for them because they don't know how to, how to handle situations and things like that. So it's just, you've been with them for so long that it just hurts you.
We absolutely appreciate your dedication and what, and I do believe that you do care about the kids, but, you know, we have to consider this based on, on need, and the, the staff will take care of the safety issues. I mean, that's something they will take care of. So do you have anything else to, to speak as far as this hearing?
No.
Good. And you're good?
Yeah, just a brief closing. Ready?
Okay. You're good. No more questions. So go ahead.
Again, as everyone has said, this is no reflection on Ms. Ditman, clearly a very dedicated employee here. This is based on information we have at this very moment in time. Unfortunately, given these timeframes, registration for kindergarten and pre-K don't necessarily align with this, and as this board has done in the past, you see this on the personnel, personnel list throughout the summer, at times you'll see resend, transfer. So if, if the need arises, Ms. Ditman will be the first one who has the opportunity to go back in this position again, even if she's already been placed in another position for next year. We will take care of that anytime prior to August 1st. If the need arises during the school year next year, she has very good seniority, so her odds of getting that job would be right up there. So she has a good, good seniority. I can't guarantee her anything with regard to that, but she is well positioned. And it, it is unfortunate that these timelines just don't match up where we could know everything today, and the state, of course, as you know, puts this timeline on the board as far as making these changes. So with that information that the administration again requests that the board uphold the recommendation of this transfer.
Do you have a statement? You have a statement to close? That's good. Thank you. All right. With that, we will, I'd like to ask for time for the board to have a discussion specifically for this one at this point.
You want to go into executive session?
Yeah. That's what we're going to do.
Can, can, can we, as the board, then move to the front conference room?
Yeah, I was going to say, it'd be better for us to go.
So I need a motion.
We'll go into executive session next door, discuss personnel issue.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? We'll be back.
Yeah.
Who do you want in session?
Please.
Okay, superintendent, moving on.
All right, our next transfer hearing, we can go ahead and move to, move to that. So Jennifer, do you want to get us started here?
Sure. So the next hearing, after speaking with counsel for the employees, we're going to do a combined hearing on the two employees. Both are bus operators. So we have tonight Deborah Stanley and Freddie Eddy as the two employees. Where did Freddie go?
He just stepped out. Wait a minute. You said two. Two employees.
He asked me for permission. I will say, I was like, sure. So I didn't know how long he'd be gone, but.
Sure, they'll be gone for a long time.
I was looking, I thought, surely I could see.
I will say, they both said to me that this is a little intimidating for them, so please be gentle with us.
It's the big table.
It is. The arch, the cameras.
So you all saw the way the last hearing progressed where we will make an opening statement, and then your representative will make an opening statement, and then we will call witnesses, and then you all can call your witnesses. So with that, we're ready to make an opening whenever you're ready. Okay. Oh, and just for clarification, we did clarify, you do want an open hearing, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. So this evening, we are here requesting the approval of two bus drivers, Freddie Eddy and Deborah Stanley's, transfer and subsequent reassignment for the 2023-2024 school year. We want to clarify, and so saying that they will continue to be bus drivers next year, but with a route change. So as the board heard at the meeting last week, Dr. Campbell stated that he charged Tony and Jason here with making some changes to our bus routing when, when he came on as superintendent. And among those changes that he had request, requested were that students would ride the same AM and PM bus and have the same driver in the morning and afternoon, reduce the overlapping of runs, reduce student time on buses, and reduce the number of schools that drivers are visiting, because we did have drivers visiting up to four schools per day. So as a result of that, the Transportation Department, well, actually, this well, actually this board invested in a software system called Traversa. And of course, we already had a system called Zonar. And those two systems in conjunction with our administrators in the Transportation Department have developed new routes. It took a little longer than expected because these, um, software systems actually were purchased right before COVID. So then it was hard to get data on ridership, um, on the runs, of course. So this was the first, I guess, real year we've been back at it to see, um, what our ridership looks like and be able to truly sit down and reroute the buses. As a result of that, we have 54 bus drivers on transfer this year. Their seniority ranges from 1991 to 2022. And I will say that in at least 10 years, this is the first time that we have put drivers on transfer, um, because of rerouting. So it's something that's probably long overdue. It's unfortunate that, uh, the change is tough and we're dealing with a lot of uncertainty right now with all the drivers. So I'm sure there are a lot of nerves as we go into this. The good news is, following whatever happens this evening, if the board approves the transfers, we can start posting these jobs later this week. So we can hopefully alleviate some of those nerves and get people in their routes for next year. So once again, the administration requests that you approve these transfers.
Thank you. My name is Rebecca Rousch and I am here today on behalf of the West Virginia School Service Personnel Association. And we are proudly here serving our members, Kevin.
Freddie.
Freddie. Freddie Eddy and Deborah Stanley. We've gotten, we've butchered their names quite a bit over the last two days, uh, Joe and I have. So that's, that's our, our issue. But, um, I've had some lengthy discussions with, um, um, both Freddie and Deborah as well as Ms. Karadine, um, about the issue going on here and took some time to investigate it to the best of our ability. And what I will say is that, um, in hearing the concerns that were expressed, I, I heard a lot of really nice things said about, um, this county, the drivers here, as well as this administration. So I think, first and foremost, I want to say that we come here with a mutual respect for the work that you perform here and an understanding of the challenges that you face in implementing wholesale changes to, um, a, um, a very big organizational system that you have. So with that said, I first want to say that, um, there is no one here that, um, is challenging change. I think that that's been said quite a bit, that there's some resistance to change. That is not what we're here for. What we're here to, today is to express our concern for the way and the manner in which these, um, transfers have been handled and ask that you have a respect and appreciation for the parameters, um, of the laws that are in place that protect service personnel. And it is our belief that the manner, um, in which this was done was not appropriate for, um, or not consistent, I should say, with the laws of the state of West Virginia. And that's really what I want to talk to you about. I've made a few, um, notes. Uh, I wasn't quite sure of the format of the meeting. I'm happy to go through my notes and then turn them over to, um, the witnesses, if that's acceptable to you. But I do have a, a little talking points, um, memo to share with you, if that's okay? And there are some errors in this, I will say. We can fix them as we, as we go along. And hopefully I have enough here. And this was made on my, uh, home computer, so my apologies for the, uh, for the style of the memo. But it's effective. It'll work. Good. These are one for you. For me? I will give you one, Ms. Karadine. I'm just, my apologies, but, uh, if it's okay, I'll just proceed with, and I'll share this with you later. But, um, this is the information that I could glean from meeting with the bus operators, to discuss this issue and the concerns that they have. Currently, the Montegalia Transportation Department is divided into two working areas, Morgantown and Blacksville. The assignments are generally made by geography in that the trip list is made by geography, that Blacksville drivers do the Blacksville area, the Morgantown drivers do the Morgantown area. As you heard, I thought there were 89 drivers. There are actually 84 bus operators in Montegalia County. It was our belief that 59 of those bus operators were transferred to, to new routes. So though you're implementing a new, a new system that's going to have wholesale changes for your whole transportation department, you selected only 59 rather than the entire group of drivers to, to make changes. And that, we believe, is a significant problem in that, um, when we talk a little bit about the laws of the state of West Virginia, really shows that you arbitrarily selected, um, the drivers to be transferred, which could show, um, both discrimination or favoritism. So, so going forth with that, the reason in Mr. Eddy's and Mrs. Stanley's, um, uh, transfer letter was specifically stated as Montegalia County has started using a combination of Traversa and Zonar for routing buses for the 2023 school year. As a result, your existing bus route will not exist in the 2023-24 school year. And we just heard Ms. Karadine say that this is a, these are systems that you, um, have had under review since before COVID, which would be prior to 2020. It is our belief sitting here today that if you've taken that long enough time to actually implement this system, implementing it right, um, would be actually in the best interest of this county, in the best interest of these drivers, in the best interest of the children affected by these changes. What we're here today, today to say is that that's not been done. And again, we're going to talk a little bit to Freddie. Freddie is a pastor, by the way, who just has a new daughter, um, that he just adopted. And I've learned that, a lot about these two just in the past few days. But Freddie specifically is very passionate about the changes that have been made to his route. He's the operator of bus 347 and I got that, that's a typo that they immediately pointed out to me was wrong. You gotta get the bus number right. So 347, Freddie has 28 years, 28 years of service with Montegalia County. He told me on the phone last night that he's rarely missed work and that when you need him, he's there. These are the types of people that stood up during COVID and, and made changes for this community to, uh, help children, um, keep normalcy in their lives, even with their food routines, with their, uh, with all the changes that were taking place. And I say that to say that, given the status of where we are at with bus drivers in West Virginia, as well as across the country, in that there's a shortage, these people are precious. These people need to be treated with the respect that they deserve, but also under the guidelines of the law. One thing that we see all the time is that we're trying to sidestep rules and laws that are designed to protect these folks in terms of their seniority. And that's really what kind of happened here along the way. But Freddie, um, received a notice of transfer on March 29th. Uh, he immediately requested a hearing and he sent emails to you all, as well as the superintendent, the deputy superintendent and his direct supervisor. It is our understanding, and we are a little bit unclear, but it was our understanding that his route was approved for transfer on April 12th, 2023, prior to us even being able to come forth to you today and, and bring this, 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 uh, protest. Is that, that's not correct?
No, no routes.
Nothing, nothing? Okay, so he has been told that your, your route is going to be? What was your understanding, Freddie, before we move forward?
There are new routes posted that were, well, they're not posted for jobs, but there has been an email sent out to the drivers showing the new routes. So have you guys approved new routes?
You guys go ahead, go ahead and.
Okay.
Okay.
So new routes. So new routes have been identified. Freddie knows that he's not going to have his route, uh, next year. He's been working in that route for eight years. And as Ms. Karadine said, that the purpose of, um, Zonar and Traversa is to have some consistency and uniformity with the students, um, familiarity with the drivers. Freddie actually, um, drives the same students in the morning and in the afternoon. Um, he has a great relationships with the students and their parents. He's actually said that he's actually performed, um, pastoral services for some of these families. Um, he is not against changing a run or doing anything that's for the betterment of this administration. He does believe, though, that a change of this magnitude does need to be done fairly, taking into consideration his loyalty and his service. What's going to happen to Freddie is he's going to lose his route. He's likely going to have to, um, come across the county from the Blacksville, um, area to the Morgantown area, adding another 40 some minutes onto his day. Is that each way?
Yeah.
Each way. Um, so this is a substantial change to his life, um, that he's, um, become accustomed to. And he actually is more senior to some employees that, that were not put on the transfer list. And we want to talk a little bit about that later. Deborah actually, um, is here as an advocate on behalf of, um, everyone who is concerned about, um, this wholesale changes with Zonar and Traversa. And, um, she believes that the process in which you selected the routes are arbitrary and done with, not with, um, um, consistency, uh, in mind. The manner in which it was handled kind of could show favoritism. And she objects to the way in which it's been handled. So we consolidated them together just so, in, for efficiency. I wanted to point out to you, though, um, West Virginia Code 18A27, which is the code for transfer. And I, I'm, I'm confident you're familiar with it, but I brought a copy, um, of it. They, these two believe that they should have been involved in the process of helping select the routes, design the routes, um, have knowledge of the routes. Um, and they contend that they did not have that, that knowledge. And then I wanted to point out to you the controlling case law that I think is particularly important, that of course you have, um, the deference to do what's, um, in the best interest of the schools, but you must do it in a manner that is not arbitrary and capricious pursuant to West Virginia law. Arbitrary capricious on page two, on the second bullet point means, "If the agency did not rely upon criteria intended to be considered, explained, or reached a decision in a manner contrary to the evidence before it, or reached a decision that is so implausible that it cannot be ascribed to a difference of opinion." Arbitrary and capricious actions have been found to be closely related to those that are unreasonable. The West Virginia Supreme Court has also held that school service regulations are to be strictly construed in favor of the employee. With regard to favoritism, an employee would have to show that he's being treated differently than one or more similarly situated employees, that the treatment is not related to actual job responsibilities and employees, that the difference in the treatment was not agreed to in writing by the employee. And, um, I failed to note previously up at the top here that the, the main issue that Freddie has is with, um, the changes that were made to a bus operator, um, route Veronica Tate, who was an operator of bus 324. She had major changes to her route, which is believed up to and beyond 70%, but she was not placed on the transfer list. And instead Freddie, who is significantly senior to her, was actually placed on the list. So that's one of the issues that we have, um, specifically. And I wanted to point out to you too, um, the case of Cottrell versus Braxton County Board of Education. This is a grievance board case. It is binding on all county boards of education, which, which elaborates on the 50% rule. And the 50% rule basically says that, um, where the modifications to the runs were significant, um, and, and it's, 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 it's kind of a convoluted kind of thing. The more senior bus operator was provided a slightly modified run and the less senior operator was placed on transfer. So if you have been on a route that is modified by more than 50%, you should be the employee on transfer and the less senior, uh, the more senior employee is the one that should not be. And that, uh, I brought with me to share with you. And it also is elaborated on in Rose versus Braxton County. But the 50% rule is outlined here. So it's our contention that this needs to be done correctly. We've got a lot of really important people to your operation. These are people you don't want to lose. I mean, this man's been doing this for almost 30 years. You're going to up, uproot his life. And we just are asking that this seems to have been done kind of quickly with no involvement of the drivers, um, that they really weren't aware of the routes or the changes to the routes or had involvement to the routes. And, uh, we think that it needs to be done consistent with, um, the laws that I stated here, as well as the 50% rule as outlined in Cottrell. And I know that's a lot of windy legal, legal eagle stuff, but, uh, um, that's really our opening. We, we're here to say that, um, this needs to be given a closer look. Uh, there are, there are no objections to implementation of this system. We're asking that you do it protecting the rights of these service employees whose careers are based upon a seniority system, are based upon, um, this system that's been outlined in, in, in West Virginia laws. So you have a guideline to follow. And it's our opinion that in, in making these routes, you did not follow the processes in place. So we would ask that you, I, I either quickly get it done, uh, re, review it or alternatively push it back to where it can be done correctly. And that's our request. A alternative, alternative is that should you decline both of those, we would ask that you most definitively change the routes for Freddie and Deborah. And that's, that's the basis of our, our, uh, here, our, our appeal here today.
The administration calls as its first witness, um, Tony Harris.
As Ms. Karadine.
Oh, wait, let me ask you a question. Okay. So, um, Tony, uh, as, uh, we've stated in the, in the introduction here, Dr. Campbell had charged you with certain, um, goals in the Transportation Department. So what was your initial approach to, to reaching these goals?
Since we came out of, uh, the pandemic, that's when we were able to really look at these routes. Um, we, there was just no way to do it during the pandemic. Our, our numbers weren't correct and stuff. We wanted to be able to have good readings and everything. So at the beginning, back in the early fall is when we, Jason and I looked, started looking at these routes to start building them. And we used a combination, actually Jason is the one who built them and then would bring them to me. Um, he used a combination of camera footage to see the, the number of kids riding the buses. He used the Zonar to see where the paths the buses were currently using, uh, where they were making stops. And then we would enter that into Traversa, the routing software, to help build the, the routes more. The routing software does not build the route. We build the route. Now, down the road each year, then, when we review routes, we, it will help us with seeing if there's any way we can, uh, make little tweaks to each route to make them even better because we gotta do that every year or we'll be 10 years down the road and we'd be back right here where we're at now.
All right. So once you, you've built these routes, you've had the opportunity to look at them. Were you present at a meeting with all the bus operators on March 30th?
Yes, I was.
Was there, um, a, a strong request by the bus operators that they be permitted to see these routes well in advance of the postings?
Yes, they were.
Okay. And did you make that happen for them? Did you present those routes to the drivers?
Yes, uh, on April 13th, uh, last week, um, we sent out a email to all drivers with a link so they could see all the routes that would be getting posted, so they could review them.
So as a result of this routing, will students now be on the same morning and evening buses?
Yes, they will.
With the same drivers?
Yes.
Has there been a concern by drivers this year regarding negative bus behaviors of students?
Yes.
Okay. Do you feel that this will help build better relationships and help reduce those behaviors?
Yes, this will definitely help. Uh, when you have the same child morning and afternoon. When you have the same child morning and afternoon, the driver is able to build a better relationship with that child, with the parents of those children. And you've got a smaller group of kids that you're trying to build that relationship with.
And previously, there were drivers that were at up to four schools per day. With the new routing, how many schools will each driver visit per day?
The majority of them will be two. There would be none that's over two.
And then do you foresee this? As you know, there have been a lot of complaints over the past couple of years with sports teams and evening trips. Do you foresee this being able to free up buses and actually put more money in the drivers' pockets by offering trips again in the evenings?
Yes, it's going to help us be able to fund trips better.
Does this result in reduced time on buses for students?
It's not going to reduce it for every child, but we are going to see a vast improvement in time on bus. There will still be some that are over the limit.
And then another concern that we've had over the past couple of years, especially with the elementary schools, were the buses that would roll in, you know, a half hour after the dismissal time. How will this look now at dismissal time at every school?
With, barring any accidents or construction time delays, all buses will be on the school property before or right at the dismissal time.
Were there any drivers with more than a fifty percent change of their route that were not placed on transfer?
Jason, I'll.
Well, I'll wait and ask Jason if he's the better witness for that. Okay. Okay. And Ms. Roush stated in her opening that the trip list is made by geography. How was that determined by that that's how the trips would be posted?
That was decided before my time here. But the trips out, any trip coming out Claybattel or Mason Dixon, those are trips to the drivers in that area.
Okay. So you don't know how that originally came about? Okay. All right. And while you see the board minutes, did the board already approve the transfer of Freddie Eddy?
No. On April 12th, board meeting, I present, Jason and I both presented to the board the, what the new routes would look like and everything. But there was no action taken at that point.
That's all the questions I have.
Good evening. Can you state again, start your position for my benefit?
Transportation Director.
And your name again, I'm sorry.
Tony Harris.
Tony Harris. Okay, Tony. You indicated that you have, you were given the assignment by the superintendent to review wholesale changes to the bus routes and implement and upgrade your assignments based upon software purchases prior to COVID. Do you recall what year that was?
2020.
So three years ago, you were given this assignment. How, have you been working on it all those three years?
No, ma'am.
Okay. What parts of it did you work on during the three years that you were given the assignment?
During the COVID, the only thing we really used the software for that time, at that time, was our activity trips. We did play with our routes, current routes, but at no time had we started building any of these routes today.
Okay. So when did you first begin building the routes?
Probably about November this year, this school year.
Okay. And so you testified, Mr. Harris, Harris? That you all personally reviewed each individual route. Is that correct?
Mr., Jason did, yes.
You heard me say specifically that Mr. Eddy actually is already performing his route consistent with the idea of what the reasoning and the purpose was for ZONAR and Traverse to begin with, which is to have the same children in the morning and in the afternoon to build working relationships. Did you exclude those drivers from changes to the routes if you knew that they were already working consistent with the goals of the software programming?
In some areas, yes. But there was more to the changing of the routes and building the routes than just having the same kids morning and afternoon.
Okay. Please explain to us what the reasoning, what process you utilize in making changes to the fifty-four routes that you changed.
We looked at having the same kids morning and afternoon, reducing the number of schools that the buses would be servicing. Also, what buses, other buses were in those areas. We have several routes of these that are being adjusted. We had multiple buses on those routes, basically leapfrogging, picking up students.
Is that the case in terms of Mr. Eddy or Ms. Stanley? And I can ask you later. You could just say you don't know.
I convey that to Jason.
Okay. You indicated that you started working on November 30th, but March 30th was the, is that the first time the drivers were made aware of your ideas of how the changes were going to be made?
No. Christmas, we, when we came back from Christmas break at our meeting then, they were informed that we were working on changes. We did not share any of the route information until last week because we didn't want to put information out before then because we were still making adjustments and building. And we could tell them something and then the next day it'd be changed and stuff. So we wanted to wait until we had it ready to go. And we was able to make a presentation to the board also.
So March 30th was the first time these drivers, even though you've had the system since 2020, is the first time they've heard of potential changes for their routes?
No, they were informed, I believe, January 3rd at the, on our professional learning day that we were making route changes.
You made them aware, but you actually did not make them aware that they were individually going to be marked for transfer until March 30th?
No, we did not know until in March, the middle part of March there, exactly who was going to be affected or anything.
Okay. And when you identified those who were going to be effective, why did you not involve those particular drivers or have a committee of drivers who could have some say into the impact of the changes that could be made? Particularly in an instance like Mr. Eddy's where there's going to be substantial changes. Why did you not involve the drivers in helping to help you smooth out the route process?
Because we were using the data we had and the videos that Mr. Lenhart was watching. The ZONAR, we had the information we needed for to make these decisions.
So you didn't feel that the people that actually drive the routes could add some benefit to help you make those?
No, we're looking at two or three, four different routes to make one route.
I'm sorry. I don't understand why they would not be beneficial to, for you to hear their concerns.
Because we were using the data we saw and we knew what we had there.
Okay. So for instance, and I won't belabor the point. When you got to Mr. Eddy and you saw that he was going to be leaving from Blacksville and move and would be transferred off a route that he'd been performing for eight years, did you not think that would cause some disruption?
We knew that there will be some disruption for our drivers, which we have the utmost respect for all our drivers. We have some of the best in the state. But when we do this, we're not looking at the driver. We're looking at the route. The route's what drives where we were building these.
Okay. So let's go specifically to Veronica Tate. Are you familiar with that driver? Okay. Let's talk a little bit about her route. Can you explain to her? Oh, I'm sorry. I was not aware it was an issue. 347, bus operator 347? So sorry.
I'm sorry to let you go. I should have made that comment.
Yes, thank you. Bus operator 324? What percentage of changes did she have to her route?
We're talking about a bus route. We're not talking about a bus operator. We're talking about a bus route.
But it's, the route is attached to a driver.
Okay, that's fine. But let's talk about the route.
Okay. What are, what we're contending and I guess I'm what my?
We can go into closed session if we have to.
Okay. I just want to ask if any consideration was given to the fifty percent rule. I know there was some discussion here before the board in prior meetings that that was not a real law that existed in case law. Did you give any consideration to fifty percent rule in making any of these changes?
Yes, we looked at that. And again, I would convey those, that question to Jason because he was the one looking at them. But like with that, the route you're talking about there and talking with Mrs. Carradine, that was a change there that we could make during the middle of a school year if we needed to. So that justified where we did not need to put her on transfer.
She's a less senior employee to Mr. Eddy, is that correct?
Yes.
And had she actually been transferred, he could have actually been on this route, is that correct? Or could have been placed in this route?
If it would have been a transferred route.
Right. So if this would have been a transferred route, she had, she had significant changes to this route but didn't get transferred and is less senior. Is that favoritism?
No.
Why not?
Because the change that we could make could have been made during the school year, too. So again, I'll convey that to Jason because he was the one that worked on them and I don't want to speak incorrectly from what he was doing there. But no, there was no favoritism on any of these.
But you do understand there's a large discrepancy in the years of service between bus operator 324 and Mr. Eddy?
The next, the next thing that I can put a person to the comment, we're going to go into executive session.
That's okay. I thought you asked me to.
So generalities. Generalities. If a bus operator has, you can ask that question, less seniority, please do not, it's bus operator number zero that can be tied to an employee.
I don't, I actually don't have to say any. I can tell you generally, the reason we're here is that there's not been any sort of recognition given to the seniority of the bus operators in these changes consistent with their years of service and their seniority. And by not doing this correctly outside, done, outside the parameters of West Virginia law, you've exhibited favoritism and discrimination. And that's the heart of the argument we have here. And I'm ready to move on.
I don't, I don't have a problem with that comment.
I could go to the, you can go to the next witness.
We will call Jason Lenhart as our next witness. Jason, what's your position with Monique County Schools?
Transportation Manager.
And Jason, were you largely instrumental in the building of these routes?
Yes, I was.
Okay. And as you built the routes, what were the considerations that you looked at in designing them for next year?
I designed them solely based on the routes. They were not, they were not assigned to bus numbers. They were simply assigned to schools. So each bus route was constructed as, I'll use Westwood as an example. It was constructed as Westwood 1, Westwood 2, Westwood 3, Westwood 4. And then, once every school had their route designed, it was paired with an elementary school. No bus numbers were assigned at that point. No drivers that were assigned at that point. They were strictly based off of, the routes were designed strictly from ZONAR. They were not, Traverse was not involved in this process at that point because ZONAR is our GPS data. It shows us exactly where the buses are going, what roads they are using, and where the buses are actually physically stopping. So we were able to create the routes based on where the buses are traveling, using the bus stops and the addresses at each bus stop. And that information was input into Traverse to, to add new scheduled times to each bus stop. So in my design, the bus drivers were not, no bus, like I said, no buses, or drivers were part of the consideration in the building of the routes.
As you worked to building these routes, did you participate in meetings with the curriculum team as well? Namely Deputy Superintendent Donna Talarico, Associate Superintendent Sandy DeVal.
Yes, we had a few meetings, basically to discuss the appropriate bell times we would need at the schools in order to make the routes work in a timely manner.
So the notion that you threw these together, that you are discriminating against employees, that you were arbitrary and capricious, were these well-thought-out routes? Did you dedicate a number, a lot of time to this?
I have looked at every single bus route and every single bus stop in this county. There was not a single route that was not thoroughly looked through. Every single bus route, every single bus stop, without any consideration to what, who was assigned to that, to that, the current bus stop, or bus route.
So was it after the routes were built that then you compared what current drivers have to what the new routes would be?
Yes, as we were beginning to put them into Traverse, we, the routes were, if we didn't change any routes, because there were quite, there are a few routes that were built significant or were built enough that they didn't require any type of change or very little change. I just kind of lost them, lost my train of thought. Can you say that question again? I'm sorry.
Sure. So, actually, I forget my question. Oh, after you had built your routes, was it then that you compared existing routes to new routes?
Yes. Yes. Definitely, there was some comparison there just to make sure that timing was still going to be correct, that the buses were going to get to the schools and to the bus stops on time.
Even though you work in an administrative capacity, do you also drive a bus when you're needed to?
Yes.
Okay. Have you, how many days approximately this year have you driven a bus?
I'm going to say more than thirty days. I can't put an exact number on it, I'm sorry.
So you are, you yourself are familiar with the bus routes in this county, correct?
Yes.
Has Tony driven a bus this year?
Yes.
About how many days do you think Tony's driven a bus?
Well, he drove one bus particularly for two solid months. So I'd say this year, he's probably got more drive time in than I do.
Okay. So you're not sitting behind a desk deciding what, you know, based on nothing, how these, these runs are going to work? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
It was literally, part of the process was pulling the hard drive of each bus that we have in the county and counting the student heads to make sure that the new bus routes would comp, would be able to handle how many students would go onto each route, tentatively.
And do you feel like you've created good equity and ridership on these buses as well?
It's a little bit of a concern. That's my primary concern as we go into the next school year with these routes, that there are going to be some areas that are going to see an increase. Fortunately, we have buses that can handle greater capacities. These buses are currently assigned to schools that currently need them to haul greater loads based on our new design. That will not be the case and we will be free to move these buses to these, to these areas if we need to use them there.
So at some point in time, you sent a list to me that had the names of drivers that were going to be put on transfer.
Correct.
Were there any drivers not put on transfer whose route was changed by more than fifty percent?
The only one that could possibly, could potentially be looked at more than fifty percent is the route in question. However, it is a route that involves special needs students. And it can be, it is a route that can be changed within a school year without any disruption to other bus routes.
So with regard to Freddie's route specifically, let's talk about how was that route changed?
Okay. Initially, we had left, had left the Blacksville buses alone because for, for the most part, they do transport the same students to and from the school. The initial part of the process was hitting the number of eighty-four bus routes to make sure that the eighty-four general ed drivers we had still had a full-time driving position. That was the ultimate goal, is to make sure every single driver we currently had had a bus route. So Mason Dixon and Clay Patel were left to the last schools to be, to have their routes redesigned. By the time we had gotten to that point, we had, we had in fact, an extra, extra route out in Blacksville that we needed to eliminate to, in order to hit that 84 bus route mark. Now, we have been looking at Blacksville at, over the past year as potentially losing a route. It's something we have, have been discussing. Not which route it would be, but how we could possibly lose a, lose a route out in Blacksville because the ridership is, is not at the same level as our Morgantown routes. And so this was just an opportunity to implement that. Whenever it came to bus, the three, three buses that were involved in this were bus 347, 349, and 321. There was no way to decide which, because the buses are traveling, the majority of, they're traveling the same paths. There was no way to say which one would be eliminated. They were just merged into two routes rather than three. And the, the drivers involved were put on transfer for that reason.
Okay, so you, I just want to make sure that we all understand. So there were three routes.
Correct.
There are now two routes.
Yes.
And all three of those drivers were placed on transfer.
Correct.
Okay. So I've heard a lot since our meeting March 30th, that drivers had no idea this was being done. How would you respond to that?
My response would be similar to what Tony said earlier. The data we have at our disposal for where the buses go is sufficient enough to create bus routes. I feel that, first of all, being a former, a driver of this county since 2009, that if we were to involve drivers in the process of creating these routes, that would place a charge on us for favoritism because that could be this, a driver that I was friends with before I became a supervisor. That, that, so the drivers were left out for reasons that like that. And plus, because, drivers are going to give us information to, to support their routes, to, to maintain the routes as they are, that they're familiar with. In a, in a change like this, and how much change needed to be done, I saw no better way to do it than just use the data we have on, using our GPS data, rather than opinions and preferences of outside opinions.
Okay. And, and I just want to clarify your last statement. So you were a, a school bus driver in Montague County Schools, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then where did you go after you stopped being a school bus driver?
I was, I was moved to Preston County as a transportation director there.
Okay. And then you, when did you come back to Montague County?
December 2020, 21, 21. It was that, almost exactly a year.
Okay. And when you were in Preston County, do they also use Traversa?
No.
Okay, what do they use?
They were using a program called Edge along.
Okay. So is it similar in the routing?
To, to an extent. It was not something that I was able to fully implement there. The GPS data of that program, I did use consistently. When I went to Preston County, I was also expected to drive myself. I knew nothing of the roads there. So that was how I learned each bus route, was I studied the GPS data. And I, that's, I'd say that's where the roots of this change came from. Is my, I was able to learn a bus route following a line on a computer screen in a county I had no familiarity with, other than a few major roads. I've also used this program, or used this system to design our special needs routes and our summer, our summer program routes. So I didn't see any reason why this would not work for our general ed routes.
Okay. And do you feel like the system will be beneficial to substitute drivers when they get on a, on a bus?
Yes. As a, you know, being a supervisor, I am also a day-to-day sub. And this is exactly how I continue, if it's a bus route that I have not driven, is it's how I continue to learn a bus route. I pull up the ZONAR GPS data. I see where the bus stops are. I see what time the buses are pulling out of the bus stop, or out of the bus garage, or from wherever they are stationed to start their next route. And this is how I continue to navigate myself on bus routes in the county that I have not driven, every single day.
All right. Why did you not include the special needs drivers in the transfer on this?
For the, for special needs, they are, they have to go to where the students are anyway. Their routes are not consistent. If you look at a special needs route compared to a general ed route, general ed routes are very specific. They follow a road. They pick up kids along those roads. Special needs routes have to go to where the students are. No schools will be changed in the coming school year for the special needs routes either. That was also a consideration we used when they put the buses, when the drivers were put on transfer. Part of the criteria was where they moved from one school to another, with their, was that bus, was that, not the driver, was that bus moved from one school to another?
Just look at my notes here. I think that's all the questions I have for right now. Thank you.
Good evening. I heard you say that this was a really big change.
Yes.
You agree that you are making changes to the way in which these drivers go about their every day in this, in working in this county? I mean, it's a pretty big question, but it's a really big change for these folks, correct?
Yes, I mean-
And you said that you started working on this in January, communicating with your colleague there, looking at the routes, communicating with the schools, looking at video, looking at ridership, looking at, working with the academic folks. But you didn't involve the bus drivers? The people that actually are the boots on the ground and actually navigating these routes every day, day in, day out. Why is it that they shouldn't have a voice in something that is what you have termed a really big change to their work?
Because it's very easy for a driver to say, "That will not work", with no further explanation but to say, "Based on their own experience." Whenever we have at our disposal data showing that it absolutely will work. The bus routes are covering roads and for the most part, covering areas that, that they're already, they're already driving on. So we can say definitively that this bus can make it from this point to this point because it already is. That, the data is showing us that. It's not a program where we're pushing a button and it's saying, "Yes, this is possible." It's already being done. So a driver is going to give their, give us their opinion. And that is in my, now, granted, I, as, as a leader, I try to listen, but at the same time, when something like this comes into place, you have to be able to make, make a decision in a leadership role that, that's going to benefit the, the drivers and, our drivers and our community. And like I said, the data showed that it can, the data has shown that it can be done.
Okay. I heard you say that you reached out to academics, Mr. Transportation. Their, their opinions do matter. Do their opinions matter?
I'm sorry.
The folks that you consulted with?
I-
Do their opinions matter?
Well, when we sat down with our deputy superintendent, it was to discuss the bell times that we would need at the schools in order to make this new, the new schedules work.
What you're saying, and this is just more of a comment, is something I hear every day in the representation of service personnel, and I say this to you, is that their voices don't matter. He's basically, sit here, confirmed in his testimony that they would make it complicated if I actually listened to the people that do this job, day in, day out, that they would make it more complicated for me. I just want to do what needs to be done, make them do it. They don't get a say. We, we do it, we move on. That, in my opinion, creates a morale problem, Mr. Transportation.
But that's not, that's exactly, that is-
Let me ask you a question, please. Has there been any pushback from your fellow drivers as a result of these changes?
Yes, I have been insulted quite a good bit due to these route changes.
Well, I think that, you know, please explain. How have you been insulted?
For relying on a dumb program to-
I mean, you're just making an anecdote. We obviously can't name a person here, but, so there is a morale problem now with the Transportation Department in regards to effectuating this software change?
Yes.
Do you have a bus shortage here in Montague County?
Yeah, we have a, we do have a driver shortage, yes.
Okay. Do you think that this is doing any good in helping you solidify your program to keep and encourage bus operators working here in this county by not involving them in something as big as this change?
I don't, I wouldn't know how to... What driver would I be able to turn to without other drivers accusing me of favoritism?
I think that's what is similarly situated to those that you did not transfer.
No, because their route was to change significantly. Their, their routes-
Well, his route was eliminated.
There, there's no way to, I cannot say that that route was specifically eliminated. It was, there were three routes that were merged into two. That whoever's route was eliminated, I mean, I cannot, I cannot say. I mean, if, there's no way to say that definitively. I could just say that I take, took stops off of this bus, this bus, and put them into two routes instead of three.
Well, given the controversy that it's caused, would it not be in the best interest of this county to just take a little bit more time to make sure it's done correctly with the best interest of everyone in mind, the students, the schools, the administration, as well as the bus operators, who you have admittedly said their opinion doesn't matter?
Am I allowed to? Okay. We currently have bus routes. We're, there are maybe eight to 10 students on that bus. And we have buses that are, have every single seat loaded with two to three children on, in a seat. What we were able to do through this was even that out. So almost every bus has a more evenly distributed load. We also have buses that are servicing four different schools in the afternoon and other buses that are just sitting with, with one or two schools in the afternoon and able, and, and just sitting, having nice long breaks while their drivers are running around all, the entire day.
Which is somewhat like the, the bus that we were questioning previously.
But the thing is, by you saying that I'm, that I'm doing anything against their morale, in fact, I'm trying to make things, when we built these, it was, everybody now has two schools, not four, not two. Their, every, every bus, with the exception of five routes, has two schools that they will be servicing. And everybody will have a little break. That, these were all things that we, that we took into consideration.
Did it work?
Yes, it has. It'll work.
I mean, did it work? Did it boost the morale of these employees?
Right now, they're, right now, everybody is upset over route changes. They, without, without even running these routes and seeing the benefits of, I mean, we can't even get to that point where morale can start increasing until we get past this.
I, I really don't have any more comments other than that he's accusing these people of being close-minded while being close-minded himself to the opinions of these drivers.
I'm going to go back to that gross, gross statement of his testimony.
We, we're, I'm ready to move forward. I have no further questions for him.
I just have one question about service personnel's seniority and how it's determined. Are substitute years and full-time employment years counted the same way?
I can't answer your questions because I'm not a witness here.
Okay, who can answer?
I, I can address it, I guess, in our closing or-
Okay, just address it in the closing. That's my, that's my question because I, I think that's a confusion for me as, as people have recounted their seniority. But they talk about being a substitute for part of the time and being a full-time employee. So I can't, I don't know if, I'm not educated enough on that particular role, so.
Floor is yours.
Yes. We just would like to call Mr. Eddie, and he has prepared his own statement that he'd like to address to you. And I would remind him that not to reference anyone specifically, talk in generalities so that no other employee's identity is made known here.
I'm going to be, you know, much more brief than I had planned. However, I did prepare five folders. And I would like, if you guys would like to share them, I can pass them down. I, I didn't know who all would be here. I had one for each board member. If you just, if you could maybe share and allow Ms. Carradine and then have that. Okay, and I can sit, sit down. When you open it up, there's a, a cover letter. I'm going to skip the first page completely because it would be redundant to what's already been discussed here. For the most part, you can gloss through it or read it or whatever. It doesn't really matter. And again, I'm not going to elaborate a whole lot. I, I do want to touch about three points, main points that I had to make. And just because I spent a lot of time getting this stuff ready. And I would like to make at least one comment about the 347, if that's, this is the right time for that. Whenever it was stated that three runs were made into two, bus 347, every single stop on my current bus, and I can talk about myself, I guess.
Absolutely.
Is being added to a new route number, 349. So to me, that is, that's not merging three. I mean, it's not like my route was divided into two different ones. It was all, then like four routes was taken off of the 349 and added to one other route. But let me just get to this. The first thing I have, I numbered these, you know, I'm, I'm not an attorney and I don't have people working for me. And I done this late last night. I put purple marker or hot pink marker on there in pages one, two, and three. This is a new proposed bus route for Clay Patel, Mason Dixon. You can look through those stops and see that there are Days Run Road, Days Run Road, Upper Days Run Road, Connor School Road, and then there's four new stops, Daybrook Road, Daybrook Road, Daybrook Road, Daybrook Road. Those are all within four minutes. Those four routes, four stops, were added to this one newly created route. A, a route, is it okay just to say a route number, current route number, 321? That's a current route number held by an employee. And if you look at those stops, Upper Days Run, Upper Days Run, Connor School Run, Days Run, Connor School Road, Upper Days Run, Days Run, Indian Meadows Days Run. This old route, 321, is now titled Bus 349. You can look at the back pages, page number four, page number seven. Maps are identical. They travel the very same roads, but they travel backwards. Instead of starting on 218 and going through Daybrook and up Connor School Road, back out and down Days Run and into Pinterest, to Clovis Bridge, to Clay Patel, same thing for Mason Dixon. It now goes in on the Pinterest side, Clovis Bridge, goes to Lower Days Run, goes to Upper Days Run, Connor School Road, back out, crosses 218, the same direction he went to Daybrook. Picked up four new stops. That bus got transferred. Four stops added in four minute time, same mileage, same students, morning and afternoon. That bus operator was transferred. A new route was assigned, a new bus number, and now that person has to rebid. So basically, in my opinion, that route was just taken from someone. The next thing we have is pages eight and nine. Wait there, I'm sorry. That's, that's the same one. No. I'm sorry, I'm getting nervous, guys, and my stuff's out of order here.
We talk to God all the time. You shouldn't be so, be so scared talking to us. We're certainly not that.
He's there, but he's, I don't, I don't sense his eyes staring at me. I'm looking for page eight and nine.
Yeah, here we have, yeah, there we go.
It's, it's, what I'm looking at is, yes, please.
That's it.
Number eight is a current bus number, bus route. Number eight is a current bus number, bus route. You guys can see it on page eight. And page nine is a current bus run. You can see what it does in the morning. I don't know, am I allowed to say what it does? It picks up one special needs student on St. Leo Road, has a con, a, a, an aide on there. Am I allowed to say that?
Yep, it's a generality, and you can also speak-
This aide has an extra duty contract, so this bus is not assigned an aide like every other special needs bus.
Because you're talking to me in terms, let me, let me just stop.
I know, I know, this doesn't make-
You're talking to me in terms of page nine, we can see the stuff on that information, that camera can't see it, so you have no issue whatsoever.
Okay, okay. Well, that's the main thing. What, the only point here, I, there's no point in me talking about this forever because I think these points have been made multiple times here tonight. That route is completely different in the AM than it is in the afternoon, except one, special needs students. It makes a two-and-a-half-hour trip to Morgantown every morning. Then in the afternoon, it does something. It takes that special needs student back home from Clay Patel, and then it goes, does, and does something completely different, page nine, for Mason Dixon Elementary. This route was not transferred. Much less seniority than me. Had it been transferred, I could have remained at the Blacksville location. Then I think I just have one more, one more that I want to make. Skipping to page 11 and page 12. The top half of page 11 is the current route 347, which is myself.
Hey, yep, we see.
Right now.
Yeah, page 11, we see the top route. You don't need to give us a number.
Okay, I'm sorry. The second half of the page is, you'll notice, that's a current route this year as well. That's what we both do when we leave Mason Dixon. We leave at 347. I know this new number 12, this is the new route that's going to replace both of these. I want you to notice that currently, elementary students from 347 to 416, that's 29 minutes, I have elementary students. This new route on the second half of the page is going to merge where I leave off at the Church of Christ and going to finish up at Marion County Line, 3470 Crossroads Road. From that point where our routes merge to where she finishes with the last elementary student is 17 minutes. And I know it was stated previously that elementary students would not be on the bus. Now, that was changed tonight, but last Wednesday night, no students were going to be on the bus more than the recommended time. Those students, combining my route with the now current 349, elementary students would be 46 minutes. But now the new route has every single stop the same way. It has all of my stops, 347, combined with the current 349 stops. Somehow it's going to do it in 31 minutes. I noted that. Also, 2866, 2882, and 3027, three places in one minute. Now, how many of you tried to be in two places at one time? I know I've tried. It doesn't work. I've never been able to accomplish it. Here's a bus that's going to be in one place, all within one minute. I would propose that that would be illegal. By the time you make a proper stop, using your yellows, set your brake, put the bus in neutral, let the student get away from the bus safely, shut the door, turn the lights off, then proceed to the number two stop, you're not going to do three of them in one minute unless you do something illegal. You're going to move before the student safely off, away from the bus, or he's going to be up there standing before you make the stop. I, I've only worked permanently 20 years, but I had eight-year prior substitute, and I said 28 years is my year's service, not my seniority. So that's, sub-seniority is different than permanent seniority. I left and went to Mylan, sub, for those six years while I worked midnight shift at Mylan, three afternoons a week. Then I came back permanently 15 years ago. So that's my main things. I think there is absolutely some routes, I don't know how you determine, 50% and 20% and 90%, but I do know I can look at the current route 321, compare it to the new route that's going to do every stop of the current 321, that is titled 349, new route. And I can look at the current route 324, and there is significantly bigger changes. There was transfers done, and that is a route that I absolutely could have had. Currently, the way it is, I will be the, the driver that will lose where I'm at now. And I worked a lot of years to be where I'm at. I can see where I parked my bus. It's parked in my route. I don't tram my bus all the way back to my house as a vehicle, you know, transportation. My bus is parked. I can see it. I, in my route, and I parked my bus 200 yards away from my first and last stop. And like I said, I could, I could go on for a long time. That's really all. I, I don't really think there's any need for any more, for this, this matter. And I, I mean no disrespect to anybody, and I hope nobody takes this personal. You know, because I certainly don't mean any of it personally, but I think it's absolutely been done unfairly. I think every, a, a change this massive, every driver should have been transferred and let their seniority put them where they fall, and then you could say every, I'm sorry, that's your seniority. Now you're saying some seniority counts, some seniority doesn't. And I understand we're, we're transferring positions, more people, but I got caught in a really bad place, and I'm not real pleased about it. And I thank you guys for your time, and I thank all the work you guys have done. I know my route probably needed change some, but I never dreamed that it would be eliminated. And then I feel like maybe there should have been a rift if, if a route was eliminated. That's all.
No, no, sir. I would just say that I think Mr. Eddy actually speaks very clearly as to why the voice of a bus operator deserves to be heard in this situation. And we would just ask that you take the time to do this process correctly. No one is objecting to change, but we need to do it fairly, consistent with the laws and consistent with those laws that protect service personnel. Nope, that's it.
Anything else? Closing?
Ms. Stanley's not testifying?
I don't know, but I didn't get started. But you guys have done a good job. I understand.
Wait a second.
Wait, did you, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say a couple things.
Okay, she previously had indicated she didn't want to.
Okay, so good. Well, sorry, Jennifer. That's my fault.
You guys have done a good job. It needed done. I mean, from where I worked at Postal Service and doing Robert Dressman's stare, I understand all that, and I don't know if we got our, the look at the routes after the deadline on the 10 days or when it happened, but I know a lot of drivers were like, maybe they should have filed for a hearing because of the seniority issues and how you guys came in to leaving special needs out. I talked to two or three, not all the special needs drivers, and none of all of them's routes change every day. They are in a certain area with a certain school. I mean, that's, and from what I understand, maybe Jennifer can enlighten me, is, is there anything in black and white or you to keep them out of this seniority process with something this big? You know, there's 59 transfers, and in the last two years, I'm gonna ask Tony this, how many routes did you guys tweak that you didn't need to transfer when somebody died, retired? I mean, you legally can do that, but how many of those out of the 84 were changed that were left out of the transfer? That's my, one of my questions. I wanted to know. Like, there were some of the routes that were changed and tweaked that weren't, there's supposed to have been tweaked some where the morning and the afternoon were the same. Are you guys still working on the ones that weren't in transfer, or?
Okay, we can't.
He's not a current.
Yeah, he's not a current witness.
Oh, okay.
Tell me why you, you objected to this.
I just, I think everybody, to make it fair, what I've talked to out of 40 out of the 59 drivers that aren't here right now, that they want the seniority, their seniority to play a part in this and not just, you know, a group. Like, there's 59 transfers, okay? And I don't know, Jason, maybe Jason can answer this too. With the route being gone, out of that 59, is there somebody not going to have a route, but they're going to be a full-time sub?
Just make it, tell them why you object to the whole thing.
They were, when they were up, you could have asked them anything you want.
Yeah, okay. These are my points, like, basically, they just want everything to be done on seniority, and everybody with this big of an overhaul, put them to the pot and, and do it by that. That's, that's what I've been asked to bring to you guys' attention. That's all I have to say.
So this, this is a very, it's a hard process, and it's hard for everyone to accept the changes that are coming, and you, and you can say it's not the change, it is the change. Ultimately, that's what's driving this, is there, there is a change here. There, there are allegations that this was arbitrary and capricious. I was part of those meetings when Jason and Tony met with Deputy Superintendent Talarico and Mrs. DeValt regarding these changes. This was carefully considered. These routes were built with the utmost interest at heart of, believe it or not, the drivers, the students, the, I mean, this was, these were carefully considered routes. There was a lot of work and time that went into this. Jason didn't sit at his desk one day and click a few mouse buttons and said, "Put these people on transfer." This was, this was done with very careful consideration. And tonight, you've heard, heard a large emphasis on seniority. Transfers, yeah, this is a large transfer. Transfers aren't based on seniority. They are based on the position. And we look at the positions that are being changed and the positions of the people who need to be moved. And that's where we are tonight. Bumping is not permitted, where, which it is permitted in the professional realm, but not the service realm. There's one exception to it. It's known as the Barry bump. It doesn't apply here. So you can't bump someone out of their position. You, you heard mention of, "We, we've had this software for three years, and we just pushed this out suddenly." That's not true. As you know, the whole world lived through a pandemic for a significant amount of that time. And you heard Jason testify that he did, in fact, use the software for our summer programs that we had, and that was a good test of the software to see, is it going to work? Does it help map these correctly? And he didn't rely solely on the software. He said he pulled the hard drive from every bus. He looked at ridership. He used his own experience as a bus driver. Were drivers involved in the process? No, they weren't. They were given a task to do here, and they did the task. They're the leaders in that department. Quite frankly, if you're going to involve that many people in a process, we'd be here 10 years from now still trying to get it done. You simply, sometimes, as Jason said, you have to be the leader and make the decision. And again, that's where we are tonight. I think there have been a lot of insults here regarding what Jason and Tony did and what they considered and didn't consider. They never said that the drivers' opinions don't matter. I know they care about these drivers. I talk to them every day about issues. I know they care. So this isn't a personal decision here. As you know, we come before you with transfer hearings all the time. The Mrs. Dittman, who was just before you this evening, same situation. She's probably going to have to drive to Morgantown now, when she's been at Mason Dixon. Because if we don't post a job out there, then she is going to have to drive in. Every driver, I, I personally met with, with the drivers on March 30th when we delivered these letters to them. I answered questions for an hour and a half that day. I made it very clear that every driver had the opportunity to request a hearing, and you have two hearings before you tonight. I think that kind of speaks to the morale. Maybe they are upset, but maybe they also realize this needed to be done. I don't like it. It's not the best decision that we have out there, but it's going to be done, and in the end, it's going to be great. If we had put everyone on transfer, that wouldn't have been legal because we aren't changing every route significantly enough to warrant a transfer. And I think you had your seniority question answered there. But lastly, I mean, this, this is huge. It's a house of cards. If one falls, the whole process is done. So it's, it's an all or nothing here. They either all go, the ones before you on transfer, or it can't happen. So this is where we are. A lot of work, a lot of time was put into this, a lot of consideration. You're going to hear that I violated the law in some way, that we did it wrong. We have not. So the administration asks that you uphold this recommendation.
Yes, thank you. I will be brief, but I think the intention of the presentation here today was not to insult anyone or the good work that is being done in this county, but to point out the flaws in the process, and the flaws in implementing this program. I think what we're seeing is a resistance to the past, a resistance to actually following the laws that come before you. We want change, but we want change without having to follow these laws as they're identified in this state, by our legislature, by our Department of Education. You have to do the changes that you want within these confines. If they're not within these confines, then you can't do them. So what I am saying is that, and what we are requesting, is that not to not make the change, but to do it more carefully, with a lot of thought, considering the voices of these drivers. I think you saw Mr. Eddy point out to you specifically, if you get down to the nuts and bolts of these actual routes, you, he just pointed out to you the flaws of the routes that are currently in existence and pointed it out pretty clearly. How can someone do three stops in one minute? That's what we're up against. Reversing someone's route and calling that a transfer, that's, that's not right. That's not, that's not fair. All we're asking is that you do this fairly and do it with thought. And yeah, I, I do think that January to the present date, that's not a lot of time. That's not a lot of time. They might have worked individual routes, but, you know, it might have taken a little more thought. And why not invite the people who actually can tell you what these routes are like individually? You know, hey, that kid over there, you know, he has to come down the hill and go here to get on the bus. That's, that's important information. An important information that should be respected. And while we're, we are not asking you to not implement this program, we're asking you to do it fairly, consistent with the laws of this state. And I will point out too that this cultural decision, this 50%, does actually utilize seniority in making a, a transfer. So I, I would actually ask you to, to look at it pretty closely. Seniority is important. It is all a service personnel has. You know, we sometimes forget that these are career-oriented folks, that this job is important to him. I remember my own bus driver's name. He knows these kids. He knows their families. He knows, maybe they come out the door late. You know, he knows this information. You can't discredit that. And all we're asking is that, you know, all they have is their seniority, their standing in the, in the county, and this particular process, the way it was done, did not appropriately recognize their years of service in, in reaching these, these conclusions, which was required by this cultural decision. So that's all we're asking, that you do it fairly. If that requires you holding it another year, unfortunately, this might have been a process that needed to be started in September. That's not the fault of these folks, and they're, they're entitled to raise these concerns with you, and thank goodness they are because they can point out to you, hey, I'm not being listened to, and if my voice is important, and things I'm saying is important. So that's what we're asking. We're asking that you actually put more scrutiny into this decision. We've heard it's monumental. If it's that big, it's important enough to be done right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Board members?
I don't have anything.
I have a major question because I, I sit here as I was trying to listen, listening to testimony, trying to read a 20-page decision give me, and I'm, I'm gonna read. Grievance, grievance has not established respondent's collective actions. Grievance has not established the reconfigured, reconfigured routes of Bus 96. Must be posted. Grievance failed to demonstrate accordingly. The grievance is denied. The grievance is denied. Can you explain to me what's different about this denial of grievance and what we're looking at today?
Yeah, this particular county, the grievance was denied because, let me see if I can go back.
We got 20 pages, and I tried to read it between comments and...
He did not, this particular grievance was not able to show favoritism or that he was treated differently than another similarly situated employee. And what we have here today is we're saying, hey, we've got 80 bus drivers here. They all do the same job responsibility. Whether it's a special needs route or a regular route, it's still a bus route, it's still a bus job. We are saying that in making this transfer, you have actually exhibited favoritism by not utilizing this 50% rule, that there are bus, bus routes that had significant changes beyond 70%, beyond 50%, upwards of 70% that didn't get transferred. So that there was not a utilization of this rule that they put in place in this case. And that's what we're saying, that this case...
This case, you give us this case to establish the 50% rule?
Yes. Not that it was denied. It was, in fact, denied in 2011. The circumstances are not the same as the circumstances here. This is the case that establishes the 50% rule. And there's another one, Bill Rose, that also cites to this particular case. And that's, I think there was some discussion as to whether it was a urban legend or a myth that this case exists, and it does, in fact, exist. So that's how, in this county, how they decided who would be changed was, or who would be transferred was based upon how many changes were made to that particular route.
Something that bothers me is it's in parentheses, the 50% rule's in parentheses throughout this document, which is something that, I think this might be where state law has to change on this one. Says superintendent determines the bus operator who had previously driven routes that, when reconfigured, modified, changed by 50% or more, would be placed on transfer, and the reconfigured, modified routes would be posted as new routes.
Sir, as I can see here, every...
But sometimes referenced by the 50% rule.
There's a lot of changes in education law that need to be updated, but they haven't been made. And this is, this is binding. When I go argue before the grievance board, this is not just a, you know, a guideline. This is the actual law as it exists. So 50% rule is real. It is a precedent that hasn't been changed, and we are obligated to follow it.
I'm sorry, you don't remember where that was at? Talk to me about the 50% rule and how that was applied.
We did apply the 50% rule. If there was a route that was changed by more than 50%, they were placed on transfer.
And that's how they were done?
Yes, I mean, possibly the only exception would have been the route in question there, but it was a route that we could change, could make a change to during the school year without disrupting any other bus route.
Say that again.
The bus, the bus route that Freddie Eddy has brought that, said that he would be able to have bid on, had it been put on transfer, as a route where the changes, the changes on the route were made, could have, could be done within the school year, without disrupting any other bus route.
There are changes that are sometimes made during the school year to a bus route.
I can imagine.
And then there are some changes you can't make during the school year because they're too significant, so it would have to be done through the process of a transfer. So when we discuss these, I didn't sit down and look at every route, but I said, look at these routes, the ones that are significant changes, 50% or more, send them over, and those are the ones that we will put on transfer.
So we're talking 50% of a route, not 50% of our bus transportation...
Department.
Department.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's the route. Each individual bus run.
Talk to me again about the bus route that he spoke to, that you said, maybe that's the one that he could have gone. Explain that very clearly.
Okay. That route, the way that it's currently run, could have been broken up onto, the changes that could have been, that were made on that route could be, we could actually do that by the end of this week and not disrupt any other bus routes. Because it's, because it, part of that route is coming into Morgantown in the morning for next school year. That is its own route. It's a shuttle bus from Clay Patel to XL and M-Tech. It's currently run by one bus in the morning and one bus in the afternoon. So that was the significant change on that route.
Is it changing this year or not till next year?
No, it won't change until next year. But it is a change that could, could be done this year if we needed to.
If there was been a need that arose during the school year where we need to make a change, we could have made the change without affecting any other route.
Does that change the 50% rule sometime? I guess that might be a Jennifer question.
I don't know the specifics of that well.
Right, but if it's changing, 50% of it is changing and it's not being implemented till next year, does that qualify as 50%, does it fit in the mold of the 50% rule?
Yes.
Has this ever been considered anywhere else as far as the percentage of bus routes change?
What do you mean?
Well, the 50% rule applies to an individual run. I wonder if this, you know, obviously we don't have that in front of us, and no one's presented that as far as, is there a consideration for, because I'm sitting here thinking if we, if we, we're kind of in the middle of two things, because we're going to, if we, if we go with leaving them on routes, then we upset the ones that aren't on. It's a fight, no matter where. This is just an absolute disaster, one way or the other, if we go the, if we try to go the opposite direction. And that has everything to do with personnel law. I mean, this is, it's where we're at. It's not something that we can be, we have to go by what we have in front of us. We have to ask, the specific question is, was this considered? And you're saying it was considered. And it's kind of impressive, when I asked you about a bus route, you started going through it mentally, and I was thinking, wow, that's pretty impressive. So you know all the bus routes, I mean, so you've spent some time on this. So I'll open it up and let other board members ask questions. I'll have some other questions. The one thing I did, the first thing I wrote down was define substantial. That's going to be something that's going to have to be defined in terms of this much of a beginning of that.
We have had people transfer because of 70%, but it was years and years and years ago, I will say. That mean, it isn't that this is the first time those percentages haven't ever been brought up. I, I really don't have any questions, because I keep feeling like this has all been covered and the one route in question that he, you know, Mr. Eddy has dissected, and I, quite honestly, because I am not as familiar with anyone's bus route individually, I can't say whether this is a good idea, a bad idea, or substantially changed. I mean, I know you feel it is by the numbers and stops you've given us, but I do know last week, when you presented the maps, which were public, which people saw, that the stops were the same on the before, before map and after map. So can I tell you how long it's going to take? I have absolutely no idea. Because, you know, you are relying on your knowledge of the area and the sonar and software systems and everything else you pulled. So that seems to be the biggest question. And to say we don't respect the bus drivers, when I think we tried to say, every employee's important, and we, I can't say any employee we have in any level of anything is more important than anyone else, because we never know which employee is going to connect with which student and why. There's absolutely no way to quantify that, and the same is true of any industry that you're in. You don't know if a medical assistant is going to connect more than a nurse practitioner, is going to connect more than a nursing assistant in the field that I'm in. You can't predict any of that. So to say we don't appreciate our employees is something I don't think we, as a board, we as a county, have tried to say, and I think we've tried to show that by where excess levy dollars have gone, and I think our community has tried to show that by where they wanted excess levy dollars to go. Because quite honestly, we could differentiate a lot of different ways, on a lot of different pay scales for a lot of different things. And I think we've tried not to do that, because we know everyone is important. I do think there's going to be some staff members affected more than others. And I can't predict where someone lives, or if someone doesn't live, or where they're going to have to go to. And that's true of any job. So I think this is just a tough activity, and I think we asked a lot of those questions last week, when you presented us with this whole scenario. So I really, do you have any questions?
I just, I mean, I looked at that route, and I saw, I understand what you're saying. I'm not a bus driver, but three stops with no change on time. I just wondered how, is that a mistake? How was, how was that route going to happen?
The times on that, that's the traversa times. I mean, those can be adjusted.
Okay, okay.
It's not, that's not setting.
All right.
That's just the computer program establishing times. We didn't put this times in there ourselves. That's the computers, I mean, and there's going to be some differences in times. It's not going to be too substantial, you know, and you might be looking at a few minutes here and there. But it, that's just a glitch on the, on the computer program part. Now, Tony and I talked about that earlier today, and, you know, we can manually put in the times as we, as we see fit to change, to change it to reflect what it's actually going to be.
Okay. Thank you. I, thank you for...
To speak to that, about the times, when we've used it for like our summer programs, we use the times that the software gave us, but then we go back and we look at them manually, comparing what they're saying to once the driver actually runs the run. And there's, like Jason said, there's sometimes there is some glitches, like Freddie had mentioned also. But most generally, the time that the software says and what actual is, is, the most I've seen is like 90 seconds difference. But every year, or like there in the Summer Avalanche, and then the ones that we were using the last couple of years there, that I was watching to see how it worked, I can go in, Jason can go in, after the school year starts, the first week, get, where they run the routes, they get established in that route, then we go back in, and we can manually change those times to reflect the actual time.
Thank you for answering my ignorance on that.
But the beginning, ending is what's the important. You fill in the blanks in between, but the beginning and ending is what's in line with what you planned.
I guess I just need to, I'm still stuck on the 50% rule, sorry. The 25 people that didn't get transferred, only one of them exceeded the 50% rule?
It's, there's some gray area there, because like I said, there is a special needs student involved in this, on that bus route. And it's a matter of, really only a quarter of the route, I mean, the entire route is looking to be changed. It's not, it's going to be, it'll have a morning elementary route, where currently it is the morning XL, M-Tech shuttle, shuttle bus, and then the afternoon is a different, different bus. The bus that runs it in the afternoon will now be the shuttle bus, morning and afternoon. And this route will have an elementary, an elementary run, morning and afternoon.
I'd like a motion at one executive session.
Don't move.
Second.
Hold paper.
Aye.
All right, it's the same.
I'll tell you what I think about these.
Hey, we're coming back into regular session. From executive session, having made no decisions in the executive session and moving on to public hearing, I think I swear right.
Yes, you see.
See? Speaking in Spanish, huh? See? Public hearing, superintendent.
Yes, this is our second school year calendar hearing. Do we have anyone present who wishes to speak to the school calendar this evening?
So I've had community members and staff of the school system ask me why we are not, if we would consider reverting to the one week off after Easter rather than doing the wraparound and doing the March wraparound that we did and the April wraparound because they feel that often students leave before the holiday and just don't come to school for three days and then use the other two days and then it's the holiday or vice versa the next week. And so I didn't know if that was ever going to come into consideration. So I'm just putting that out there because we realize the staff puts together the calendars that are voted on and obviously we've not been overrun with folks at the public hearing.
Yeah, I think that's, the only thing is I've, for the first five years on, I was on the school board, I got nothing but beat up about taking vacation away from people. Ever since we've done the wraparound, it's been zero comments about that. Because when you give them a week, everyone does an eight week, eight day vacation and then it snows for four or five days. In January, we canceled people's vacations. Some of them just missed school and some of them. That's, that's the beauty of the wraparound and I think that's what the staff said. So it would have been nice to see a little bit of data on whether there's that much missing.
Yeah, and I don't know if that's something that will, the calendar committee will look at, the absenteeism of students and staff, those, the week before, the week after, and then that time in March. Because I do know people often extended around that wraparound also. So, anyway.
Are we able to take accurate attendance data? Are we, are we able to collect accurate?
From a student standpoint?
Yeah.
We're as close as we're gonna get.
With Weaver's issues.
I don't even know how we can compare this year and the wraparound the last couple of years to, to, I mean, it's gonna be tough to do.
From a, from an employee standpoint, we have not, we did, did not see a significant absenteeism from, from an employee standpoint. With the current calendar, the way that it was created, there was not a significant employee absenteeism problem.
And if I could just call for that too. The, Nancy, I think this speaks to what you're talking about, that with intention, we put a break in March because we felt, and I have heard very positive feedback, that that break was much needed by our staff because otherwise there is no break in March. So we did do that with intention to make two breaks out of it, to give a sense of opportunity for people to have time to regroup, refresh, and, and then move forward. So my responses back from everyone that has talked with me has been, this has worked so well in, in that way. I do understand what you're saying about, you know, the whole week situation, but we are still cognizant of what I heard our president, board president say. We never know what the weather's gonna be every year, we just get predicted and we could, we could easily lose those days.
And obviously the staff continues to vote for the same, this same type of calendar, but I, I just, I'm just putting that out there for those that keep asking me and I'm like, okay, I'll say it, so.
Yeah, but recent choices have just been variations of a wraparound and not a continuous week.
Well.
It's not like you have much of a choice in the staff, okay, do I pick this wraparound or this wraparound? It's not like you have a choice of a wraparound versus a whole week.
Well, although the calendar committee is staff, that puts it together that everybody votes on, yeah.
I was on it.
So I'm, I'm just saying, you know.
Reaching the choir, and I know it's, it's, my hat's off to Sandy because she does a heck of a job doing it and the staff does, but you're kinda handcuffed a lot by what the state requires and, you know, like I said, if you wanna, the options that teachers have gotten and everybody's gotten has been wraparound versus wraparound, not wraparound versus a whole week. They haven't had that kind of a choice. So I just wanted to clarify that.
And we've been, we've tried to mirror the calendar annually because of the significant positive feedback that we've gotten. You know, and again, I, like you just said, I, you know, I attribute that to the work that Sandy and her past committees have, have done, that we've gotten to a point where people really like the calendar. And so she tries to put that together in that same format year after year and that's why I think, I believe generally we don't get a lot of feedback at these types of hearings simply because people like what they're, like what they're getting. So, but it's, it's certainly, again, you know, something that we need to, to take into account if there is comments out there that, you know, we need to look at something, then we need, we'll take a look at that and get feedback on that as well. The next step, just for your information, will be to bring back a draft calendar for, well, it'll be a calendar for your approval that, that again Sandy can put together and we'll bring that to you for formal approval because I believe it is due to the Department of Education by May?
May 5th.
5th, yep, so.
Next week, it's gonna be.
Thank you, board members.
All right, moving on to reports discussion, follow-up action.
Okay, first, Mr. Hankins is here, I know he's been waiting patiently for us. He is going to give us the Safe Schools presentation. So Hankins, we're gonna turn things over to you.
Take one of those and pass it on for the board.
All right.
Thank you. And then take one of those and pass it on for.
Thank you.
So thank you for the opportunity to just give an update of student behaviors here in Mont County schools. And we have had a significant, and I won't say significant, but an increase in behaviors and specifically an increase in behaviors when it comes to.
Is there not one there?
Here, can he take this one?
That's better, yeah. Take this one, you said, being recorded.
That's what happened.
Is that better? Is that better, okay? And we've had a, an increase in behaviors that require students to be referred to the Safe and Supportive Schools Committee. And when a student's being referred to the Safe and Supportive Schools Committee, it means they are being recommended for expulsion from Montague County Schools. So I kinda wanna talk about that a little bit, kinda talk about our process here this evening of what the Safe and Supportive Schools Committee, the process that they work through. So when students are referred to the Safe and Supportive Schools Committee, it's because they violated a, a policy in 4373, well usually a level three or a level four that requires an expulsion or the process to work. We currently have had 48 referrals to the Safe and Supportive Schools Committee this year alone and we still have a couple months left in school. That exceeds the most we've ever had in the other time in a school year has been 35. Given a comparison, last year we had 32 to go through that Safe Schools Committee. Doesn't mean that an expulsion has occurred, it just means we've given them a due process and worked through that. When we, part of that Safe Schools Committee, we have a, a group of directors that are involved and that, that is a, a well-rounded committee that's usually a director of psychology, counseling, an outreach specialist, an attendance person, a school health, special education, myself that are involved in that. This process has been, is actually a really nice process and, and this process was before I even started in this job. I've been in this job about 10 to 12 years. Ms. Talarico started this, back when she was an assistant, or started as an assistant superintendent, put this committee together and we have been complimented tremendously on this. As, as recently as last week, we were in an extensive Safe Schools hearing that involved a student with, with special needs. Attorneys, legals were involved and at the end of that, the attorney for the, for the family pulled us aside and complimented us on how well the process worked and actually told us we needed to take our show on the road to other county school districts instead of just referring students for expulsion in front of Board of Educations to actually work through the process and, and to get to know families, get to know, get to know the scenarios, get to work, to work with a student, what supports can we put in place, work through some policies and actually see if expulsion is warranted. And in some situations, based on policy, we don't have a choice, we have to recommend an expulsion to the Board of Education, as you guys well know. And then at that point, we give the parents an opportunity to come in front of a board if they choose to have a hearing. Many times they do not choose that, often, or you know, you guys have been through that process where sometimes they do, but many times they do not specifically if it's part of a policy that we have quite a strong, strong evidence on. Behaviors that we are seeing the most right now, and I kinda wanna go through that process just to kinda keep you updated, threats of violence right now and physical violence seem to be one of the higher things, higher ranks. And I don't know if it has to do with what's going on in society as we know, some of the things that have happened down in Virginia, some of the things that have happened locally, but everyone's threatening of school violence right now. So we are bringing students like that in to make sure we get to know more and dig deeper into what's going on in that family or with that student. We have minor weapons issues right now and when I talk about weapons, I'm not talking about guns, we're talking about maybe a penknife or something like that that might come into the school system. Drug possessions and drug distributions, we're starting to see a high increase in, in our school system. And specifically, and what I really wanna talk about today are the vapes. We're really struggling with vapes in our schools and, and we kinda wanna go into detail a little bit about that. If you would, board members, if you would take a look at this article that I kinda handed out to you, it talks about, if you look about the second paragraph down, it talks about the study revealed that West Virginia ranks as the highest state as the most obsessed with vaping in the country. And it gives you your list of rankings on the next couple pages and yes, we're number one on that ranking. Now that's just one article, one opinion, but it's kinda where we're at right now and that's what we're seeing is even in the community, it's not just in the schools but in the community, everybody seems to be involved with some type of vape and they're readily accessible to kids and they're easy to get them whether it's through their parents or whether they're purchasing them. So they, why are they a major concern for us and why are they such a trouble for us right now? They're so small, the, many times they look like a little thumb drive that you would put into your computer, they're able to put in their hands, they're able to put in their pockets, you can, you can very rarely see them, but they're very accessible by taking hits on them all the time. They have things that look like pins, they call them dab pins, that have THC in them a lot of times and I'll get into that as we go a little further into it. But they also put them in places where we cannot search. Very often they're put in private parts of your area that frankly, I, we don't encourage any of our administrators to do any type of search where they have, feel uncomfortable and we're not asking them to go in and search kids, but it's not uncommon for them to put them down in their groin area for, put them in this area with, where they have, you know, maybe a, a garment that can, can hide it. So it's hard for us to do that. And then they become uncooperative. And when I said they become uncooperative, their parents become uncooperative. As we're trying to search kids, if they refuse, we can't, we, we've been known to call parents. Parents come in to get their children and ask for help to maybe help search them. First thing the parent does is says, we're leaving and they take their kids and leave the premises. So we really don't have any evidence of what those vapes are, if they're on, even though we know they're there, we just can't get to them. One of the other things that's hard for us to really determine is what is actually in the vape when we get them. Most of the time we think it's nicotine, we are finding more and more that it's some type of drug that is a lot of times that is located in that and it's hard for us to test. That's, that's the hurdle that we're looking at right now. We are fortunate to have the Mont County Drug Task Force located here in, in Morgantown with us and so they are helping us when they can. We know they don't work for us, they know they got a big job in their own, they're working. If they're available, we can take vapes and they can do it, but that may be two and three weeks past the time of the time we get it back. And so it's hard for us to do that. I've looked into purchasing vape, or the, a reader, and I'll show you on the next page here shortly, a little reader that you can put those things in and it tells you what's in them. That little reader costs us $25,000. I could get a discounted version for 17, 30% discount, but, so we're, it's just very expensive for us to work through and it's not easy to open up those vapes and get the, whatever's inside to be tested. If you look at this page, we tested a vape at one point from one of our schools and the five items that you see on there is what was inside of a vape. If you read down through some of those descriptions, it's very disturbing. THC, of all things, is probably the best thing that's in those if you read through them. And so that is where we're at, we are very concerned specifically because we don't even believe at times that the kids know what they're putting into their mouths whenever they take a hit on these vapes. So we're working through that and it's starting to scare us. Here are some stats from this year alone to this point, which I think actually is lower than what I anticipated, but we have had 166 violations of students being caught with vapes in our school. Now that's a little bit low, but now that's only because, that's only contributed if it was with nicotine, okay? Because that's categorized one way, if it has a drug in it, we categorize it a different way, but 166 violations of a vape that the students were caught with nicotine in it. We have had eight students be transported to the hospital this year because they took a hit off the vape and they were unconscious, were dizzy, were sick, didn't know what they took a hit off of in our, in, in a bathroom or a hallway or something and we've had to send them to the emergency rooms. So we're very scared and we're worried and that's where our focus is right now is how can we get these vapes out of the school system? What are, what do we currently have in place that we're working with? Right now we have vape detectors in some of our schools, some of our schools have requested them, that we use the vape detectors and they work to a certain extent, but they're very tough to catch because by the time you get to a bathroom, some of these bathrooms have, we have, schools have 12 to 14 bathrooms in them, the vape detector goes off, sends a message to our cell phones, administrators run to these bathrooms, you may not have anybody in by the time you get there, you may have five people in there that you don't know who has the vape on them. But they, they do work, it just takes some time to find and we can go back through footage that can show outside the bathrooms and see who was going in and who was going out at the time, so we're working through that process. We have an educational component, obviously that's what our job is to educate kids. Our nurses came up with a nice, anytime we catch a student with a vape, we put them through an education program that tells them what's the bad things about vape, why you shouldn't be doing it, how you can get help, how we can work through that. We work with the local law enforcement, they provide citations for, for these students. Some of the citations could be up to $250. That doesn't seem to deter many people because kids don't have money to pay for them and at their certain point they quit finding the parents or the grandparents because, well, I keep punishing them and so it's not being paid anyway. Parent communication, we always communicate with a parent once we find a student with a vape to try to help educate them as well. And then after multiple offenses, we are starting to suspend students to remove them from school. We have some changes we are trying to make that are, we're trying to move forward with, with some additional, we found another, a program, an additional education program that goes a little more in detail than what we have, so we're going to incorporate that in as well. We have some swipe badges and let me explain to that, as you swipe into bathroom and swipe into doors even and to come into the board office, we have been adding swipe badges to bathrooms to help eliminate students to just have free access or so we can help gauge who's in those bathrooms to help us to track down when we catch a student with something like that. Many, many times a student will leave a classroom to go to the bathroom and end up across the hall, across the school in another bathroom, not even in their area, and they find their friends or whoever they're with and they work through, so there's four or five people in a bathroom. So we're trying to eliminate that by adding swipe badges to bathrooms where you have to log out in what we call E-hall Pass, which is another thing, so we know who's out of the bathroom, where they're going to, they can swipe in, swipe out, but we're trying to eliminate access during class time. It doesn't seem to be much of an issue during the hallway exchange or whenever, because teachers are out in the hallways, but it's during that class time when they go to the bathroom, the students end up connecting with each other or exchanging these type of things. Again, we talked about the E-hall Pass, we can, some of our schools have done a nice job of trying to do some data and do some research on, are there certain kids that are in bathrooms at certain times or is there a certain face that we're seeing all the time? And then we make sure that those students aren't out at the same time. Because if you're not familiar with our E-hall Pass, if I log out and I need to go to the bathroom, but I'm not allowed to be, I can set parameters in there, if I'm not allowed to be out at the same time, Mr. Lidle's allowed to be out and he's already out in the hallway, I can't get out, they won't, I can't sign out. It'll tell me I have to wait and then once Mr. Lidle signs back in, then it'll allow me to leave. So we can kinda control certain kids of where they're in and out of bathrooms. One of the things that I think is gonna be huge and one of the things I'm asking you to kinda look at and, and hear what we're talking about tonight is we think it would be good to change some policies. What we currently have, if a student gets caught with nicotine or tobacco in schools right now is we do an educational component, we give a citation, we can do an at-risk assessment with them and then communicate with parents, but that doesn't seem to deter it. If we catch a student with some type of controlled substance, it gives us a little more teeth because the first time we would catch a student with controlled substance, we do a three-day out-of-school suspension, a two-day in-school suspension, an educational component, an at-risk assessment, but it gives us a little more leeway, we can get them in juvenile drug court, we can get them some help that way. And then the second time, we can recommend for expulsion. I've been doing some research, talking to different counties that are dealing with the same things we're dealing with and, and so one of the things that I would like to see happen, one of the things I would like to recommend is one of the counties that we were talking to, as soon as someone is caught with a vape, they are removed from the school for 45 days for an alternative setting. And that doesn't mean, that means if they have possession, if they have consumption, if they're just not cooperating and then they remove them from school because they've put it out there, this is their policy now. There are some counties that are finding kids with vapes because it's so bad, they're recommending them for expulsion immediately. So we are gonna look at, I would like to recommend looking at changing some policies to, to have some more teeth to get into these and to try to deter the vapes that are coming into our schools because they're so easy to access, they're so easy to refill, they're so easy to put some type of drug in that system and so it's just very easy to access for our kids and, and we're very concerned that health-wise, we're going to, it's gonna be very serious for a student at some point. So we'll continue to work through that, but with some, with the blessing, with some, with approval, we would like to work on changing some policies to make things a little tougher. So, okay? Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
So when you talk about educational component, are you talking about teen court?
So teen court, we do work with, we work more with the juvenile courts right now and the juvenile drug court. Teen court hasn't, we still have that and we can still work through that, that's kinda just came back recently. That went away for a little bit, but now it's starting to come back, so we can use that as well.
Cause my understanding is a lot of students caught with vapes are assigned to teen court with varying levels of seriousness, if you will, because I do know that's started back up since COVID. I mean, you know, it was gone during COVID. And I, you know, I have been asked by parents, well, you know, why are you, why aren't you just suspending them for five days? Why are you making me take them to teen court? And, and I'm like, well, part of this is so that this is taken seriously, but I'm still not sure the students are taking it seriously. I think it's a big pain for the parents, so many of them may be. And the other thing I wanted to ask about was, a big thing I've been hearing is that the students use the vape and blow the, whatever it is, in their locker, in their hoodie top, down their sleeve, you know, they're very ingenious about how to get rid of the, the smoke from the vape and I know the, but well, transportation is dealing with it on the buses. So where are you with some of this?
So everything you just mentioned is 100% correct. They are smart about how they do it. There's a whole clothing attire out there that you can vape on one side and blow it into the sleeve on the other and the vape goes in and never comes out, you'll never see it. I mean, you can go online, there's sweatshirts, there's things that conceal it, it's, they're everywhere. Parents, parents are part of the problem, let me say that, because I will say, and Ms. Green, as she sits over there, could probably, probably 50% of the time when you catch a student with a vape and you contact their parents, the first thing the parent wants to know is if they can have the vape back because it's theirs. And so we deal with that as well. So we're not getting much support from our, our parent community of these students that are doing it, but it, it is very easy to access and like you said, the vape detectors don't always work because one of the things students do is they go into the stalls and they, for their privacy, when they vape and then they blow it into the toilet and flush it and it sucks it down and so you never get, the, it never gets up to the, the vape detectors as well. So very smart, we're dealing with students, I mean, they, they know what they're doing. So there's a lot of, it's hard, it's why, it's hard to catch students, it really is.
Well, and the vapes are cute, I mean, they're in rainbow colors and all decorated up and the other thing is, you know, I've been told that the little cartridge that goes in the vape is one pack of cigarettes. I think there's a lot of parents and people in the community who do not realize if someone's going through two vape cartridges, that's two packs of cigarettes a day. And I mean, I think there's been reports of lung issues and everything else that's happened, but people are under the impression that vaping is a better alternative choice.
That's how it was originally presented when vaping come out, that it was better than cigarettes, but you're right, the nicotine content is twice as much as what a cigarette would be and nicotine's highly addictive. So, yeah, I, I don't think kids truly understand, but again, that's why we have the educational component to try to educate the kids on it, but we're struggling with it. Yep, I agree.
Is there something that we can do, like that, that disturbs me that a parent picks up a kid and doesn't comply with the search and just takes him off campus and then they come back to school the next day?
So that's why I'm actually, and I've talked to Dr. Campbell, I've talked to Ms. Talarico about this, one of the things that I would like to, if we can change, take a look at changing policy is that if you're uncooperative, then it counts as almost as if you're.
Absolutely.
Guilty in the situation. We know you have it on you, your parents aren't willing to cooperate with us, you take them and leave school. We would consider that as, as guilty as having it on you and we would look at whatever the sanction is because we've gotta, we need to send a message, we need to send it, a tough message that we can't have these in school.
Similar to like implied, Jennifer, forgive me, implied consent? I mean, if you get pulled over for, you know, drunk driving, oh, I don't wanna take the breathalyzer, I'll just go home.
Right, right.
Nothing happens to you.
Right.
Now that doesn't, that's not the way the world works.
Right.
And I would like, I'm, I'm all for that policy to have something like that. Parent takes them off campus, fine, keep them home for three days.
And, and it's one of those things, like I said, I gave the, the example of maybe if you're caught with a vape, obviously we would publicize it prior to school, starting next year, that these are the new policies, this is what we're looking at, probably have an educational component with students beginning of the school year and have them sign off on it, that you've read it, you understand and if you get caught. I'm not saying 45 days, that's just an example that one of the other counties is using is they automatically send a kid to alternative ed for 45 days if they get caught with a vape. I'm not saying that's even has to be the number, I, we'll work through that to see what's best, but we do think we need to remove kids that aren't following what we need to do and are putting other kids at. But we do think we need to remove kids that aren't following what we need to do and are putting other kids at risk.
Right, because other kids have to inhale it.
Correct.
Right?
Correct, yes.
It's going to go somewhere.
Yeah.
I mean, so when you're saying remove them from school, would they, how would they be educated for whatever period of time they would be on suspension or?
Well, if it was an alternative education, they would still go to school every day. They would be in school every day. It would just be an alternative place, it would be a smaller environment like, and it could be the after-school program that we have, it could be the day program that we, I mean, we could, we'd, we'd work through that, but I mean.
Could it be virtual school?
Say what?
Could it be virtual school?
I don't know how, I never say never, but.
I mean, we did that for a year and a half.
Virtual is a little more controlled by the state and we have like specific enrollment dates for virtual. But you're right, we have not explored just a version of that for us. We have, we did start a new program this year that has been well-received by our middle and high school administrators. It is an after-hours from four to seven. It's a, it's a intermittent alternative learning setting. And we are, we, I've normally used it for up to three weeks for a student to not attend the, their own school and have to attend there. We have teachers, counselors and outreach individuals to help repurpose the student so that they do return. So we're, we're having to look at many, many different options here to address these needs so that they are not such an issue for the school and the teachers that are trying to do what they're trying to do every day.
It's disrupting a lot of different areas of education.
It is disrupting the edu, and Ms. Green can speak. They spend, administrators spend a large portion of their day tracking kids down to work on that. And so, you know, one of the other things that we've looked into, explore because of the bathrooms is trying, finding a way to provide adult supervision more in, outside of those bathrooms. So we know who's going in and out of the bathrooms that way as well. So that's a process that we're working through as well to try to put more adult supervision around those bathroom areas.
I was surprised to see that one of the components was ethanol.
Right. Race car guy, you understand what that does, right?
Well, it brought me back to 45 years ago, huffing was the thing. And they would go like to a motorcycle tank, flip the lid and then inhale as much of that. And that was prior to having the ethanol because, you know, all the gas, most of the gas now is 10 to 15%. But there's also a product called E-85, that's 85%.
Sure.
Ethanol. I hate to even say this on camera because I'll probably get somebody an idea, but that surprised me to see that, one of the components in with this. That was not good 45 years ago. I mean, people would do that and all of a sudden they're walking around like they're nuts and they see spiders and there's nothing there. I just, I didn't understand it 45 years ago, why that was such a great idea to do it. I just, I don't see it there now as something's a black.
It really caught my attention about four or five years ago. We were, we had a vape at one of the schools and we had some test strips that we were testing different things with. And we had, were able to get the vape open, which the other part is nowadays you don't even want to open it because you don't know what's inside of it anyway. We had opened it up and we had put the liquid on the test strip and the test strip disintegrated. So we don't know what was in that because it ate the test strip. And so that's when it really became concerning to me and it was just kind of scary.
We definitely shouldn't have our staff opening something that can have fentanyl in it, even as never how careful you are.
Right, right.
I've been listening the whole way through it and every single time we talk about something, I think that's not going to work. The, I mean, you could, the parents will come in, if you make the new rule that the parents got to, they're just going to pat their kid down and say, oh, they're clean.
Right.
Go back to school. You're not going to get, the parents are going to cooperate, but they're going to cooperate by saying their kid's clean. You can't verify, it's unverifiable. I like, I like the big stick on the, on the punishment. I don't know if the big stick's the first, first time or the second time, if it's a high, whole high school career. With the buses, you send them to ALC, then we got 12 kids at ALC vaping on buses going there. I mean, that's, I would, my, I don't know, I mean, if we sent 12, if we sent 12. I'm really, I'm to the point now, every single time we go through some kind of issues at the school, it's, it's, it's a social issue, it's, it's a vaping issue. When are we going to just put the bathrooms to where it's one stall, one door, one person? And it's, and it just look like this room right here.
Where you give them all the renovation money?
That's a stall, that's a stall, that's a stall, that's a stall. And the teacher can stand right here and one kid is in that stall and it's a vape detector because often that stall, that kid did it. And it could be a boy there, a girl there, whatever, it doesn't matter what gender you are, it doesn't, it ends so many problems. It's going to cost us a lot of money, but it's going to be the end of this problem. And that'll be, that'll end your vapes, that'll end your sex in the bathrooms, that'll end your, your, you know, somebody uncomfortable in the bathroom because someone else's gender. I mean, you're going to end all this stuff with just, and it's going to have to happen. New schools, as we build them, probably need to go that way.
Maybe we need to take one high school.
Then they could vape in the hallways and blow in lockers, I guess. But, I mean, that's just, it's just one, every time, it seems like in education, you just keep coming back to the fact is, when we were in school, it was smoking in the boys' room. It's been the problem since day one. That's the place to go when you're going to do something. Because the rules are you can't watch a kid in the bathroom, which is a great rule. I'm not arguing with that rule. But if you had individual stalls, what a massive investment for this community. But if it, if it helps, might be something we definitely need to start looking at. But what a, yeah, and then you're going to have to come.
It's frustrating, it really is.
Every time we talk about something and it has to do with the bathrooms and the frustration, the fact you can't supervise kids in the bathroom.
Right.
Which is a good rule, but if it's an individual bathroom, my kids always say as long as locks work, they didn't care who was in the bathroom. So.
Want to go to outhouse?
Yeah. Yeah, but I mean, we, we're probably going to have to start looking at that as an, as an option over the next, I mean, that's not going to be something we're going to do this year, this summer. It'd be a big investment, but yeah, we need to start looking at how we can fix it.
The big issue is parent, no parent's support, no parental support.
But everything, since I've been on education, the Board of Education, it, the big, that's, you're exactly right, Mr. Berry. The biggest issue with education is parents, but we just have to move forward without bringing along the parents.
Right.
If, if we're waiting for parents to make good decisions to educate kids, we're going to be sitting here in 10 years to have the same conversation.
Well, they want strict discipline for everybody but their kid.
Right.
That's what it boils down to.
You can, you can discipline my kids if you want.
Yeah, if the parents had always told me that, I never had to discipline our kids.
But we need to start, we need to start thinking, I was about to say outside the box, then just make sure I didn't say that. But we need to start thinking creatively about how we can start changing the narrative of.
Right.
Do the breathalyzer, breathalyzer locks on the individual stalls and they have to blow it before the door unlock. If they're not clean, they don't get out.
But there's, so we can't do, it's, what's, what's, the first, one of the first things I thought was, do we have dogs sweep in the hallways?
We, we need to police the hallways, yes, we need to find.
Dogs.
Dogs, I'm sorry.
Dogs, Rover.
So we do that, we do that randomly. The problem with that is this, not many kids use lockers anymore.
They walk through the weapons detector.
What's that?
They walk through the weapons detector.
And I understand, you're telling me the, the dogs though?
When I give, when I come back in the country from out of the, I get through a metal detector and then there's a dog sitting there.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Are we not allowed to have dogs in the?
We're not allowed to have them smell the, the, the students.
Well, I wouldn't necessarily be smelling the students.
That would be ideal, I'm not going to lie, that would be ideal. I see what, I see what you're saying now, but technically we're not allowed to let them smell the students.
Kids with allergies.
In case they would attack a student and then.
Kid with allergies, did attack a student, it'd be the least of my worries. They're not, them dogs don't attack, but I guess that's a charleston question.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, yeah, if, if policy would allow us, we could do it.
There has to be a way to fix this problem. There is a way to fix the problem, but you infringe on someone's rights to do it, is what you're telling me.
As soon as they vet the smart dog, which is the electronic side of it, sniff. I mean, like you walk in courthouse, wave the wand, same thing.
Right.
Yeah, I don't know.
If they've had it on them at some point and then that, but again, that comes under suspicion.
So no, no, no dogs, you're telling me. Current policy doesn't allow dogs.
So we run them through, normally when we do it, we run them through the parking lots for the, around the cars. We'll run them through the hallways and they can check lockers, but very rarely do kids use lockers anymore.
We do take them in classrooms, but we remove the students first, have them leave their backpacks in the room and then take the dogs in there when we do it.
So they just keep their vape in their fancy outfit that holds the vape?
The vape outfit.
And I think one of the things that kids are aware that we're not allowed to have, use dogs on them. So they keep the stuff on them many times.
What's the, is that a probable cause thing or is that a, is that a violation of kids' rights? What's the reasoning?
I don't know the answer to that.
I think it's the, the search. It's considered to be a search.
Without reasonable cause?
Right.
But once you have a kid in the office and the parents won't cooperate, is that the point where you can search them?
We search, but we, we will not search, we do not sanction at all searches that go beyond a general search pat-down. And that therein lies the issue. So we, we will not sanction that. Of course, we'd never have that happen here. We don't do anything like strip searches or anything similar to that.
I'm talking about a dog. I'm talking about once you have someone that you have reasonable suspicions that they've broken the law and brought something, drugs into the schools, can a dog not smell the ruin that kids in?
So that would be up to the police and their jurisdiction on it? That's not, that wouldn't be us because those are, those dogs belong to the police department. So, and honestly, I don't have time about criminal law. So I took it, but I don't know.
Let's start.
He's close to it right now.
All right. I'll let it go, but I'm just, I'm just trying to, because it's getting late.
I think we're game for whatever we're legally allowed to do, we would do it by all means. Because we're, we're like, we're like you, we're frustrated with it. It's, it's consuming a lot of our times and there's a lot of kids that are at health risk for, that are using them. And again, I don't think they truly know what's inside of them when they get them.
And after they start using them, they don't care what's inside of them.
Right, right.
Stupid switch goes off.
I guess you could just tell us, no, we can't do anything to figure it out. We just move on.
I, we're going to keep looking at whatever we can do, I can promise you that. And we're going to make something happen because we've got to make it, we've got to make a change because it's not getting better.
But let's just forget about the parents being part of the solution because it just isn't going to happen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very informative.
Glad you were brief.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. Okay, Superintendent, graduation.
Something positive to talk about this evening. Graduation. I, I asked Sandy to, one, to remind us publicly of our three high school graduation dates and times. And then if it would be possible, it would be nice for our board members, if they know, to identify for us who's going to be at what graduations. And if you're not sure yet, if you would please communicate that with Teresa Nass as soon as possible so that we, our principals can make preparations for, for graduation. So Sandy, do you want to remind us all when our graduations are?
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
There are four graduations, right?
M-Tech too.
You know what, I don't have M-Techs on here. These are just the three high schools, but I'll get that information on.
Okay, thank you.
I have M-Tech's date. It's 8:15 on May 24th.
Okay, thank you. University High School will be on May 26th at 7 o'clock PM. And their rain date is May 27th at 1 o'clock.
Seven, say that again.
May 20, their, their graduation, University High is May 26th at 7 o'clock with their rain date, May 27th at 1 o'clock.
And, and we'll send this out to you, but I know you're taking notes, so in case you're looking at your calendars right now. But we'll send you a full schedule so you have it.
And it will have M-Tech on it. May 27th was Morgantown High School at 10 o'clock in the morning and their rain date is the 27th at 4 o'clock. Clay Batel is May 28th at 3 o'clock PM. And they have selected their rain date as the 20, as May 28th at 5 o'clock or at 7 o'clock.
What's the first date for them?
Uh, May 28th at 3 o'clock for Clay Batel. And then they're just later on in that.
Pushing it on out later that day.
Yes.
So again, board members, if you know now which ones you'll be at, Teresa would, will take that information. And if you'd rather just look at your calendars and then get in touch with her as soon as you can, she'll share that information with, with our principals, so.
My plan will be on, at all of them.
Same.
Me too.
He said same.
Just can't go to M-Tech.
It's not going to rain on any of those.
That's right. And if it does, we're going to talk about it next year, early in the fall.
I'm going to give Donna my umbrella and that'll guarantee it over here.
Thank you, Sandy. Superintendent, I'd like to skip over facilities for the evening.
All right, so you, you want to table that and the entire facilities discussion and bring that all back at our next board meeting?
Yes.
Okay. We will do that for you.
Moving on to consent agenda.
My board members, Superintendent recommends that the board approve the consent agenda as presented to include the following three items. Item A, expenditures exceeding $3,000. Item B, the payment of salaries and accounts payable. And item C is your minutes from previous board meetings.
I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the consent agenda as presented, signify my aye.
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 Aye, opposed the same. Thank you, Superintendent.
Did you want to go into the policies?
I think we'll hold policies for next meeting too.
All right, so we're going to table policy action until our next board meeting. And board member updates, fellow board members?
I have no update.
I have no update.
I have no updates.
Uh, July the 10th, there's going to be a West Virginia School Board Association Conference for Presidents and the 18 new superintendents that will be in the state. Most of these superintendents have no previous superintendent experience. So I think we're looking at a mass turnover in the state. I also want to remind everyone, you can sign up by Thursday and I know Teresa can help you if you want to go to the session on May 11th down at the Marriott, which is the legislative update. And then I'm going to actually go to, if I can, into the one on May the 4th, so.
Are you working that training? Are you working that training for the new superintendent?
I am, I am not, as of yet, working the new training for the new. I am not a superintendent. And actually, they decided to do it together because they have found that there might be, have been a high board turnover rate. And as an example was given, one county, the superintendent was called out on an emergency, did not appoint anyone to take his or her seat because they were a new superintendent, didn't realize it. The board did not realize, someone from central office had to recommend the, what to accept. And so they would, did the whole meeting with no.
About aye?
Aye.
Ours the same?
And we do not have any changes to our addendum this evening. Superintendent recommends that the board. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the personnel list addendum as presented.
Need a motion?
Shall move. I'll second.
Jen and Mike on that one, any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of, personnel list addendum as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same. Next board meeting, very important, 6:00 start. 6:00 PM.
Jen didn't burn off the point when I said M-Tech, because at 8:15, it was 8:15 in the morning, the public. Yeah. Could have been 8:15.
Anything else? Or Jared?